Okay, folks, we're gonna get started. No, there's no need to gavel at this point. Good evening. Welcome to the Brattleboro Select Board meeting of Thursday, March 20th, 2025. We didn't meet on Tuesday because the school board had their annual meeting. And I believe that they adopted their budget as proposed the other day. At 5:15, we met for an executive session and took no action. And at the time, I asked whether the meeting had been properly warned, and John said that it was. So that's great. Those of you who are in the room might notice that we have a captions sort of machine here. It's definitely not a machine, but you know what I'm saying. And I will speak about that in just one second. But I just wanted to kind of point out the thing that is new in the room. Our first order of business is to approve minutes from March 6th, 2025. We get a motion. Richard?
I move that we accept the minutes of March 6th, 2025 as presented.
Okay, Richard's made a motion to accept the minutes from March 6th, 2025 as presented. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye, that passes five zero. Next up is Chair's remarks. And so this will be my last meeting, chairing the Brattleboro Select Board. I've chaired for just this year, but this is the end of six years of service for me. And so I wanted to thank a lot of the people that I've sat up here with and worked with during that time. So firstly, I want to thank fellow Select Board members, past and present. So that's David Scholes, Tim Wessel, Brandy Starr, Jessica Gelter, Ian Goodnow, and then Richard Davis, Elizabeth McLaughlin, Peter Case, and Franz Reichman. So thank you all for serving alongside me and putting up with me to an extent. Thank you to the town staff that I've worked closely with. So that's John Potter, our current town manager, Patrick Morland, our current assistant town manager, whose last day is also coming up. Yoshi Manali and Peter Elwell, also Jan Anderson and Jessica Stickler as well. I have also had relationship, relationships, wow, I'm really making a meal of my last meeting here. You know, I've worked alongside other members of town staff, but those ones in the town manager's office are the ones that I have the closest relationships with. I want to thank BCTV for all of their technical support and coverage during these years. They have actually been a source of innovation and accessibility and commitment to community. And they're a great resource for this whole town and area, and so I want to thank them. I'd like to thank our interpreters over those years. They do an excellent job, and I don't know how they follow us so seemingly easily when we're blathering along at the speed of light. And I would, you know, finally like to thank the people of Brattleboro. Your participation in our town government is, I think, you know, pretty close to unparalleled. I think we have a really lively, vibrant, and highly engaged, you know, town democracy, and I hope that that continues. I think the board needs to hear the voices of the people in order to be able to serve them well. So please keep showing up. And with that, I'll just say a couple of more mundane things. So if you are an elected representative town meeting member, then you should know that Saturday morning at 8:30, we will meet at the BUHS gym for our annual representative town meeting. All members of the public are welcome, and the meeting will go on for as long as it needs to. Probably most of Saturday. And is there anything more you wanted to, you want me to say about that? Nope. Bring your books, bring a good attitude, bring some sandwiches. Or buy your sandwiches from the Queer Straight Alliance, who are raising funds. And then BCTV have started innovating a captions service, which, if I read the email correctly, can be accessed by scanning a QR code, which was on that screen and now isn't. And so I'm sure it's somewhere. I understand that folks who are watching along at home maybe can also access the captions. And I can't quite recall exactly how they do that. This is the first time they're trying it. It's like a trial run. So they'll continue to, I guess, explain to the next Select Board Chair how it works. So thank you to BCTV for that. And with that, I will end my very lengthy comments. Thank you. Next up is Manager's Comments.
Thank you, Daniel. So a few things tonight. First of all, I just wanted to update the board and the community. I had a conversation with the Deputy Commissioner at AHs this week and got an update on what they're thinking is happening with the motel program come April 1st. So she told me that there are currently 31 towns in the motel program in Vermont. Brattleboro has the most people in the motel program of any town in the state. And so what we'll be seeing on April 1st, unless the legislature and the governor can work something out, is that 79 households will be leaving the motel program on April 1st. And that will consist of 104 adults and 22 children in 12 families. I communicated the community's concern about this, and I hope that they will be able to work something out that is beneficial to the state and the local communities who are hosting these programs in our towns. On happier news, I'm pleased to share that the Vermont Association of Landscape Architects has awarded the Kikita Aki Wetstone Brook Flood Plane Restoration Project the Award of Excellence in the 2025 Public Places Awards. That's the highest honor that that organization gives. The jury highlighted the project's strong integration of nature-based design, climate resilience, historical context, and multidisciplinary collaboration, bringing all those things together as key factors in their decision. This is something that Brattleboro should be really proud of. It's a recognition that underscores the importance of our work, that our staff and the town and our partners have been doing in sustainable floodplain restoration all up the wetstone. And I really want to acknowledge everyone who's contributed to this achievement. The second thing I wanted to announce tonight has gone out in our press release now, but the town has hired Jay Simons to come over from the Manliest Fire Department to serve as our next fire chief in Brattleboro. Mr. Simons has extensive experience and leadership skills. He's a firefighter, a paramedic, and he's also a Command Sergeant Major in the National Guard. The hiring committee really valued Mr. Simons as a great communicator and problem solver. And I think he will complement very well our excellent Assistant Chief Chuck Keir. Really grateful to A.C. Keir's leadership, leading the department through this interim period and being, I know he will be a really invaluable resource to the new chief as well as to everyone in that department. So thanks to A.C. Keir. Chief Simons will start on April 7th. In other transitions, you will see that Seth Thomas has joined us at the table in this meeting, and he will be taking over responsibilities for the Zoom and all of that from Patrick Morland. And it is unfortunately Patrick Morland's last Select Board meeting with us sadly. Patrick has been an outstanding assistant town manager. He's a very thoughtful person. He looks at things two or three moves ahead. I find that Patrick is extremely strategic and empathetic person, and it's been really my pleasure to work with him. I've only worked with him for two years, but no matter what difficult project or situation that we're faced with, Patrick has had, you know, solid advice. I can talk to him. I trust him. I can work with him on anything. He has a really long experience and knowledge of our town, which has been invaluable to me and to the previous town managers and all the staff. He has had a really strong desire to do what is best for Brattleboro. And in addition, he's a great multitasker. And, you know, he'll be addressing some esoteric question about the Brattleboro Code while fending off Zoom bombers, and, you know, it's just amazing to see him at work. So I think that I will remember how well Patrick treated everyone, how he treats everyone with respect, even when people see things differently than he did. And I feel like he helped make Brattleboro a stronger community and a better town and a place that we all can be proud to be associated with. So thank you, Patrick. And as it is Daniel, Richard, and Franz's last Select Board meeting here in this room, I just wanted to also thank the three of you. I've found it really rewarding working with each one of you. And I really appreciate the guidance that you've given me and the advice. And I really, I'm gonna miss working with all three of you.
All right, next up is Select Board Comments and/or Committee Reports.
Well, I just wanted to echo everyone's comments. Of course, Patrick Morland will be missed, but also it is the last meeting for Daniel Quip, whom I've served with for the past six years, and also Franz Reichman for two years, and Richard Davis for one. And I know, I bet you I speak for Peter too when I say we thank them for their service and we will miss them.
Thanks, Liz. Other board members? Okay, we'll move on.
I guess I did speak for Peter.
I guess so.
I was just gonna say, good riddance.
Thanks, Peter. We'll move on to public participation. So this is a part in the meeting for the public to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda. You could also request that an item be pulled for consideration from the consent agenda at that time. If you wish to speak, all you need to do is raise your hand, and then you'll be recognized, and you'll be given the microphone here. And if you could introduce yourself and then speak for up to three minutes on the topic that is not related to tonight's agenda. So with that, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak about something that is not on tonight's agenda? Or request that a consent agenda item be pulled? Yes, sir. Would you mind coming to the microphone?
Hello, my name is Richard Ritchie, R-I-C-C-I. I live at Morningside Commons, and I have some concerns in regards to the safety from groundworks. And I think everybody kind of knows what's going on with that. But being so close to where the shelter is and what happened, there's quite a few of us that have maybe a little bit more concern than others. And what I have here is 300, almost 400 different police calls to when the groundwork was open on 81 Royal Road, the shelter on South Main Street and the Delham Chalet, where there was just so many police calls in regards to overdose, welfare checks, theft, assault, murder. And from what we're gathering, there, Groundworks has no plans of putting any kind of security officers or guards or any kind of metal detectors or wands or anything like that to secure the facility. And it seems to me that it's kind of like a no-brainer that the place would happen, happened, and now the place is gonna be even larger and hold more people and have, you know, no upgrades in security to help the people that are there, that are gonna be living there, neighbors, whatever. And it just seems like, you know, we're going nowhere with the groundworks. They're not conceding anything. They're not, you know, none of it. No, like I said, no metal detectors, no wands, no nothing, no security personnel. And people just kind of run amok through there. And, you know, they come down the hills, hill down by the cemetery, just any which way to get there. Come through our front yards, leave through our backyards. And it just seems that the same old thing's gonna happen again. And I think that I speak for a lot of people that, you know, couldn't make it. But I kind of have the pulse of what I talked to a lot of people, and I know a lot of people there since I've been there for so long, is that they're all in the same boat, that they're kind of scared of what's gonna be happening down the road in the evenings when they're walking their dog or walking their mothers or whatever it might be, their daughters. So it's a real concern, and, you know, I hope that groundworks can be, could change their minds and think about doing the things that are right to protect the public and the people that they house. That's about it.
Thanks, Mr. Ritchie. Anyone else who would like to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda? Yeah, Tom?
I'm Mosakowski. This is a request to pull from the consent agenda, the substation item.
Sure.
I'll read off my notes so I can try to be eloquent. I proposed to you all at the October meeting verbally, and then before the November meeting, I sent an email with a visual explanation with text and then followed up afterwards. The proposal is that the police substation be located more towards the rear and accessed from the alley. I think the main benefit of the police will be their patrols on foot and by car, not the public window shopping for public safety. So to me, I don't see much difference between being around a corner for them accessing their substation versus front storefront space. I think the front side facing street is or can be the most desirable storefront commercial space of the building in our compact downtown, and much more so than I believe the alley space and rear space of the building ever can be. I think this, you know, we should keep in mind the rental income that we can potentially have and to maximize that. I think there's concerns, I've heard concerns with the, public safety concerns with the alley itself, the stairs, the elevator, and then I can imagine with the planned alley bathrooms. And I think it may be a minor detail, but having the police have an access in the alley for their substation, the door they come in and out of, will be the maximum, you know. Putting the odds in our favor that those public safety concerns for the stairs, alley, and elevator will be the best they can be. Yeah, this isn't coming from the Planning Commission at all, but I've been on the commission for six years, and I've been thinking about efficient use of space and preserving commercial space, storefronts, and compact, efficient use of space in our town. And I think that's partly where, what's informing my proposal. Yeah, and then after the November meeting where you all voted for option three, I did hear from a couple people I spoke to right after the meeting, right after and then two days later, that they, it was their impression as well that it's just the total price and programming that was decided, not the actual layout of where it would be in the building and which side it would face. And then just finally, at the minimum, I want to pull the item from the consent agenda because I just haven't heard or read a statement at all that gives justification about why it should be in the front versus the back.
Okay.
Or the side. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Can I just respond to that real quick? So I don't mind pulling it, that's fine. But the item that's on the agenda is about ratifying two contracts. So that's what we'll discuss. It's not a, you know, total discussion about the project. It's will we ratify these two contracts that were already awarded? One for design and one for project management. So, you know, we'll pull it, we'll discuss it. I think it's fine. We've had a lot of people with different viewpoints about this item reach out to us and say, "Don't pull it. Do pull it." I think, you know, we're on the side of let's discuss it, but we're gonna be discussing a pretty narrow piece of it. Okay? So that is heard. Any other members of the public who wish to speak about something that is not on tonight's agenda? Yes, ma'am?
Heidi Fisher, District 7. I also wanted to pull that same item, excuse me, because of the question about, more pertain, what you were talking about, Danielle, about the two contracts. Because I'm wondering with town meeting in two days and the possibility that the budget will not be passed at that town meeting, whether it's smart to make a decision to spend this money two days before that meeting when it may be that something changes based on what the town wants at the town meeting.
Yeah, thank you. I think one of the reasons why I also wanted to pull it is because I think there's some confusion around what has been decided, what is, you know, part of our general fund budget. This was a decision that was made and funded by money outside of the general fund. And so the budget on Saturday passing or failing or some kind of amendment, as I see it, I don't think has any material consequence for this, but maybe I'm missing something.
Yeah, I would say not directly, no.
Yeah, thank you. Other members who would like to speak, other members, other members of the public would like to speak about something that's not on tonight's agenda? Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Michael Hertz. I'm the president of the Morningside Commons Association. I'd just like to echo Richard's comments about our concerns about the groundwork shelter. It's been approved by the DRB and as I understand it, that's the only town approval it needs. So I don't know if there's anything this board can do about it, but it is a big concern and I wanted to bring it to your attention. There are going to be 40 adults living there. Single adults, previously had been 30, which, as Rich said, generated lots of police activity. And we expect there would be as much if not, or even more with, with 40 residents. In theory, no one with active drug problems will, will be there, but, but drugs are so rampant these days that we know that drugs will be there and that adds to our concern. A recent article on, on the, the problems at the Wyndham and Windsor Housing Trust's Canal Street property too just heightened, heightened our, our concern and our fear about what, what could develop at this location. As I said, I don't think there's anything this board can do, but, but I appreciate your listening and allowing me to raise our concerns and echo Richard's comments. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Other members of the public who'd like to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda? Bonnie?
There you go. My name is Bonnie Gervin. I was a past president at Morningside Commons and I am currently on the board at Morningside Commons. I've made an appeal to the DRB decision. I've heard back from their lawyers, everybody's lawyers, and found out today by speaking to a lawyer that it would cost me up to maybe $15,000 to proceed with my, my appeal. And I, I just feel like we're not being heard for who we really are at Morningside. We're a very isolated community. We don't want to feel unsafe anymore. We had a tragic occurrence there and people are still shaking. So I, I just, I just want to have that voice heard. Thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie. Anyone else who wishes to speak about something that's not on tonight's agenda? Yes, sir.
Ken Faye, District Eight. I've asked a couple times of written correspondence with the select board, can be included in the package. And I'd like to expound on that because many people in Brattleboro are like me, terrible public speakers and really not comfortable speaking, but have concerns about how the town is going. So I would think, or I would hope, that would be another avenue to have their voices heard because coming down in front of everybody on TV, you know, it's a skill and not, not many people have it. And just something to be, something to consider. And I know you're all turning over, so hopefully the two remaining and the three coming in will hear that.
Thanks, Ken. Other members of the public with something that's not on tonight's agenda? Okay, let's move on. So the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. John, would you give it a brief summary? We've pulled one item from it already.
Sure. There are then six remaining items on your consent agenda. If you approve the agenda, you'll be approving staff to apply for an $8,000 municipal planning grant to help produce maps for the 2026 town plan. You will be approving an annual entertainment license for two establishments, India Masala House at 889 Putney Road and Midnight's at Two High Street. You will be awarding a $45,674 bid to Townline Equipment and Sales for the Rec and Parks Compact Tractor Replacement that's in the capital plan. You'll be appointing Sustainability Coordinator Stephen Dotson as an interim representative for Brattleboro on the Wyndham Solid Waste Governing Board. And you will be authorizing a $115,250 contract with Triumph Roofing for roof replacement and adding insulation at the library.
Thank you, John. Board members, anyone wish to pull any of those items for consideration? Franz?
Yes, Daniel. I would like to remove the municipal planning grant item from the consent agenda.
Okay, then we will pull that as well. Anything else?
Just a question regarding the pulling of the, of the substation.
Yeah.
From that. So is that a foregone conclusion? Do we, I mean, and I'm just going based on communication I've heard for and communication for keeping it on versus not keeping it on.
I think our practice has been that if one member of the board asks for something to be pulled, then we pull it. We don't take a vote on it. That's been our practice?
It's in our rules of procedure as well.
Okay, thank you. Glad.
I checked.
Yeah, that's good.
I'm just.
You are pulling.
Could you not?
Sorry.
Wait, just give us one second, please.
Yeah, so no, I'm just, I'm just basically going on what, what I've been told and what has been shared with this entire board.
Yeah.
That that decision is still being made.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. I want to, in pulling these things off the consent agenda, I also want to speak about what that means and I'm gonna get to that in a second. So any concerns that there are in the room right now, please hold them. No decisions get made without, you know, consideration, so we can hold our horses for a second. John?
So it is your practice and also in your rules of procedure that typically you would move those to the end of the agenda? Is that your plan?
I'm gonna check about that in a second because we have the possibility to rearrange the agenda with unanimous consent.
The chair holds the possibility to rearrange the agenda in this matter.
Yes, I know.
Unless someone objects, so it, you know, you can just go ahead and do that.
Yes, I will be talking about that in just a second. So we've had two items pulled from this consent agenda, which was the item F about the substation contract ratification and item A, which is about the municipal planning grant application. And so that's been modified. Are we ready to vote on the consent agenda as modified?
Yes.
Looks like it. Okay. I don't have a motion, I don't think.
Oh, shoot.
I don't think anyone made one. Franz?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented, but with removal of the items on the municipal planning grant and the awarding of contracts for the police substation project.
Okay. That clear for everybody? Yeah, so Franz has made a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented barring the municipal planning grant application and the police substation contract ratification items. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is four in favor. All those opposed, raise your hand and say nay.
Nay.
That's one opposed, that passes for one. So we will move on now. And I would like to propose that we consider both of these items at the top of our agenda very briefly. We do have a number of presentations tonight. We've got a group of people here ready to speak about our next item and then we have a presentation about Canal Street. And so we have a pretty full agenda, quite frankly, this evening. But I think the public wants to hear about these items and I think the board also wants to speak about them. So, board, would you be willing to take those items as the first two?
Yes.
Thank you. That's a kindness that you do to me on my last meeting. Okay, so let's do the police substation design and project management contract ratification question first. And I want to just give a tiny little preamble about that. Where was the person that was concerned about it? Did they, they, they ran away? Okay. What it means to pull something from the consent agenda does not mean, wow, it's instantly like not gonna happen. It means it's allowed to be talked about. By being on the consent agenda, it's a way for us to efficiently do a lot of business all at once on non-controversial items usually, that's our policy. And for some reason, this item has become a hot item and we've had a lot of people saying, please pull this for consideration. We've had a lot of people saying, please don't pull it or please approve it. And to be very clear, this is an item about a really narrow thing. It's about two contracts that were awarded and are being ratified by the board. Okay? It's not about should the substation exist, it's not about should it be funded in a certain way, it's not about the design of the substation, it's about two contracts that have already been awarded and are up for ratification. John and Patrick, am I wrong in any way on that?
No.
Okay. Patrick, did you want to speak to the item real briefly?
I, I can add a little additional context if that's useful. So the, the police substation was approved as one of the elements of the downtown safety action plan, which the board identified as an emergency response to conditions in the downtown. And by declaring it to be an emergency, that puts staff in a position to prioritize productivity above administrative procedure. And so soon after the board gave us the marching orders and approved the, the plan for option three, we assembled a team to begin working on putting together, you know, the design side of that project. And so that was in late December, early January timeframe. We began working on it in a series of meetings, both here at the municipal center and then occasionally down there at the transportation center. And have largely and substantially maintained the design to be within the same footprint that was shown to the public and shown to the board when the board approved us to, to proceed with this. So at the stage we are at today, we have, in essence, settled on a final design. It's within the same footprint that the board and the public last saw. It's a little bit different. We moved, you know, one room over this way instead of over there. We were able to eliminate one of the walls. We think that's likely gonna save a little cost or provide some additional cost to be available for an eventual public, publicly bitted construction contract. But I, I just, you know, am trying to clean up some details as I'm working my way toward my departure from the town. And one of the things that I wanted to, to get accomplished was getting these contracts ratified, doing things like one of the things you just completed for putting somebody on the Wyndham Solid Waste Management Board, a board I've been attending on your behalf for the last, I don't know, 10 years or so. And so this is, in essence, ratifying contracts that began some months ago. As you can see, we had an approved budget of $707,444. That has been adjusted a little bit based on the architect believing she can accomplish the project for less than initially anticipated, the PHVAC engineer coming in a little bit under. Each of those has provided some additional financial resources to be available for the contract. The stage we are at today is we're putting together formal bid documents for, for release. I'm not entirely sure when, probably in a handful of weeks. And with a goal of having the project constructed through the summer and completed towards the end of summer, perhaps early fall.
Thanks, Patrick. And what we're doing tonight is ratifying two contracts that have already been awarded?
Yes.
Okay. Board, could I get a motion? Liz?
All right. I move to ratify a contract with Robin Sweetapple for design and PV, PHVAC Engineering Services in the amount of $13,650 and an owner's project manager's contract with Steve Horton for project management services in the amount of $20,000.
Great, thank you. Board, discussion on that motion? Okay?
I'm all in favor of it.
Liz is in favor of it. Very good. Members of the public with discussion around that motion? So I'm gonna keep it really narrow. This is just about ratifying contracts. Ma'am?
Heidi Fisher, District Seven. Can you explain, two questions. Can you explain what you mean when you say ratify that contract as opposed to it's already been, you just said it a few minutes ago, it's already been awarded, the work has begun and now you're ratifying it? Can you explain what that means?
I can try and, you know, I'm not an attorney. So the town manager's office has some latitude to like contract with people and like pay for things in order to get things going, to make operations happen. We're not operations people here. And so my understanding is, as Patrick explained it, that, you know, they've engaged a couple of folks to work on this project and now they're bringing us back contracts to be ratified by the board. What happens if we don't ratify it?
They, they who ratify it, not us.
Yeah. But the question is, what happens if the board chooses not to ratify these contracts? Patrick or John?
Well.
Be a pain.
So, so, you know, I'm obviously not the town attorney. Certain dollars have already been spent, so those are going to be difficult to recapture. I don't, I wouldn't anticipate if we were to, for example, terminate the contracts, you know, would we be sued? I, I kind of doubt it. But I, I think there's probably at least a slim degree of jeopardy there. Again, our very, the very clear messages that we got from the board was get going, hurry up, get this project moving. And that is the path we follow.
Yep, thank you, Patrick. Do you have a follow?
My second question is, again, where, where the money is coming from? Is it part of the downtown safety action plan money that was signed? Where, is that where the money is coming?
So the, if I may.
Yeah.
So while the project is a component of the downtown safety action plan and the vast majority of the downtown safety action plan was funded from the general fund, the, the plan for the police substation was to sort of relieve the taxpayers of the burden of that. And so the source of funds would be the revolving loan fund.
Thank you. Other questions from the public on this question of whether to ratify these two contracts? Okay. Actually, I see one on Zoom, Dick's iPad. Good evening. You're still muted, Dick. One second.
Yeah, good evening. So Pat, Patrick, did someone answer the question?
South Dick?
Yep, so, thank you. Dick DeGray, District Eight. If the new board coming in, wants to vacate the contract, to have further discussions about what people are talking about redesign. What is the thoughts from the town manager or if the town attorney is present at the meeting to void the contracts that you're going to ratify?
Yeah, Tony Fisher's not. If you have any reaction?
I, I mean, well, yeah, there's any number of many, many things that the town is working on that could be second guessed. Whether the new board wants to go through that list and second guess things is up to that board. You know, if, if, if we wanted to reverse courses on this project, it would mean some risk, as Patrick was mentioning, to the contracts that we've already signed. However, it would mean that we would, you know, extract ourselves from those commitments as, as wisely as we could.
Great.
Patrick, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, the only thing that I would add to, add to that is I don't see how any, anyone benefits from a confrontational approach. If, if the board felt it necessary to halt the current process, progress and say, we would like to have, you know, definitive input on the specific design and where the building is located, you know, what that would do is likely delay the project a little bit and add some cost because, like I said, design work has been done now for a while. bit and add some cost because, like I said, design work has been done now for a while. I don't know exactly how much, right? Some portion of $8,000 might need to get spent to redesign the, um, um, redesign the space in order to put it in a different location in the building, but I, I, you know, I have a great deal of confidence in the folks that we're working with, and nobody would want to, I believe, take any sort of confrontational approach with us, and I hope we wouldn't with them.
Okay, thanks, Patrick. Um, Dick, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Yep, you got it. And we have someone else on Zoom as well, Patrick.
One sec.
If you could introduce yourself.
Thank you so much.
Patrick, you're looking forward to your new job, I'm sure. All right.
This happens there as well.
Folks, we unfortunately have to put up with that nonsense from time to time, but we'll move on. Uh, Mr. Ozer?
So Bob Ozer, District, District Nine. I guess, you know, I, I wouldn't want to be confrontational about it, but I guess the question is that if you delayed the ratification tonight and delayed it to a future date, would there be any repercussions to that? It's merely a deferment, then?
Yeah, same question as before, like, you know, what happens if we didn't, you know, I was just kicking it down the road to a point where we were asked the same question, what happened if we didn't? And the board has the question in front of them right now, and so if there's any other public comment, I'll take it, but if not, we'll answer that question.
I'm ready.
Okay, all right, so Liz made a motion, um, to ratify a contract with Robin Sweetapple for design and PHVAC Engineering Services in the amount of $13,650 and an owner's project manager's contract with Steve Horton for project management services in the amount of $20,000. Any further discussion? Franz?
Thank you, Daniel. So the, the, the one, this is a, this isn't really going to affect how I vote on this, but, um, if people wanted there to be a different design, which clearly there are thoughts like that, um, we're not going to entertain that tonight.
Correct.
But my question is, uh, whether we ratify or don't ratify these contracts tonight, does that actually have any impact on the possibility of, you know, delaying and making more expensive a redesign down the road when that does come up for discussion, if it were to come up for a discussion? What I'm wondering is whether, uh, our decision tonight just maybe has no effect on that. If people want to do that, they can do it. Uh, if they don't want to do it, they don't do it, but that ratifying or not ratifying doesn't determine the course of that possibility. So that's my question.
Okay. John and Patrick, any thoughts on that?
I, I, I think, I think you're right. You could ratify these and at a future date, you could say, hey, hold on, stop, we want to redesign the, you know, we want to have greater input on designing this, um, facility, and that may, um, result in the need for some additional resources for the contract, but that's not beyond the possibility.
Yeah, thank you.
But it does add expense.
Potentially, yeah.
Okay.
Other board members wish to discuss this?
I'm good.
Okay, so we have a motion in front of us, um, about one of these two contracts, one for, let's see, where did it go, $13,650 to Robin Sweetapple for design and PHVAC Engineering Services and one with Steve Horton for project management services in the amount of $20,000. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes five zero. Okay, the next thing that we pulled from the consent agenda that I'd like to have a quick conversation about is this municipal planning grant application. Sue, did you want to come up and help us through this? So as I understood it, there was a grant that we were applying for, and then there's some possibilities about doing that differently.
Yeah, so, um, what's before you is a grant to, um, help us fund the required maps that we're, we need as part of our town plan, which we're beginning an update to. In conversations and, you know, just understanding some of the items that we needed, that we might need in the town, I wanted to alert you to the fact that the municipal planning grant is, can be used for a wide variety of planning studies, including a capital plan and budget. And so, um, the grant is due March 31st, not March 21st, as my memo incorrectly stated, I'm sorry. So there is a little bit of time if the planning commission wanted to pursue a project, a different project, so I just wanted to open that up. It does mean the planning commission did, um, kind of sign off on the mapping project. Um, I would have to try to get a meeting of the planning commission together, surprise, planning commissioners in the audience, um, to try to, you know, to see if they would be accept, you know, if there was a different project that you wanted to do. There will be another funding round, round of municipal planning grants in the fall, but that'll probably be, you know, awarded at the end of December and then work would begin, so just wanted to lay that out.
Okay, thank you. Um, Liz?
Sue, when would this grant be awarded?
This grant would be awarded by the end of April, if we were successful.
And so if, uh, it were for a capital planning study, uh, how long would, do you think that would take?
I don't know how long it would take, um, you know, I mean, if we wanted it-
We'd be working with a consultant, um, in addition to our consultant treasurer, right? It would be complicated in that way. We'd be working with whatever this grant's consultant would render, plus our treasurer, who's also a consultant, so it's kind of a-
Potentially, yeah. Um, clarifying question, so we're talking about capital plan and, um, a plan for the budget, we're talking about the general fund budget?
No, we're talking about a capital budget.
A capital budget for?
For the capital needs that we, we identify, infrastructure and then other capital.
Okay.
And so if we wanted to go ahead with the planning grant as Sue requested, we could really work on, on one of our own internal goals, which is, uh, getting data to OpenGov and using OpenGov itself. And so do you have a idea, John, the merits of using OpenGov versus this grant?
Yeah, I mean, thi- this came up during our department heads meeting this week as a, as a potential thing that, um, the board might be interested in. I think that it would work in conjunction with what we're doing with, in OpenGov. It still, it, it probably would not, uh, I'll, it, it, we, we still would have a capacity issue for, the big, the big issue with, uh, getting data into OpenGov is that we have a limited number of staff who have the, um, knowledge and understanding and time to get that information in there, which is what we need before we can start doing our long-term capital planning. Um, so without the, enough staff in DPW and Wreckin Parks and other departments, it's, it's hard to s- to say exactly how that would work with a consultant, um, but we do need that information in there.
And are there grants available for inputting into OpenGov?
Potentially, we would have to explore that, yep.
Because that seems like that would be the most useful for our present situation.
Yep, it could be, and we, we do, we have learned of a potential consultant that could perhaps provide some of that support.
So is that part of what Sue's talking about or not?
It, it could be part of that.
Probably could be part of it, yeah.
Okay, Franz?
Thanks, Daniel. Um, so we're, we're really talking about, do we want to do this grant application or do we want to do that grant application? They both sound good, so why not do both?
We can't do both with the, with an application, they want one separate project. So, um, we do have professional services fees in the planning department budget that we could contract with the Wyndham Regional Commission to do our mapping.
So that could still get done?
It, it still needs to get done, and it would get done.
And then in addition, we could do this other type of project that would perhaps potentiate our use of OpenGov software. So, okay, well, that sounds like a pretty good plan to me.
Me too.
Other members with thoughts, questions?
I just want to say one more thing.
Yep.
Um, you know, this, if we have a very specific need, I, I think that usually makes for a really good grant application, that we know what we're doing and we know what we want. Would, would you agree?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Richard, Peter?
No, I was just going to ask Franz's question, but he got there first.
Okay. Um, members of the public with questions about this grant application?
Surprise.
Okay, so I think we'll probably need to amend the motion. Do we have enough data about, not, do we have enough information right now about what we'd actually be applying for to be able to go ahead and do this?
Yeah, I think you'd be applying for a capital improvement plan and budget. And I think that we'd want to ask for the 30,000, that's the maximum a single town can ask for, there is like a 10% match on that. So I, I think, you know, I'm going to need to start reaching out to consultants tomorrow to try to put together a budget and also try to get the planning commission to have a special meeting, um, next week, so.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, so you would want the motion to be subject to planning commission approval then as well?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, we love writing motions on the fly.
Yes.
I would say, I'm, the chair can make a motion in our Robert's Rules for Small Boards, so I'm going to just go ahead and give it a try. Um, to authorize, so the motion would be to authorize staff to apply for up to $30,000 from the 2025 municipal planning grant to hire a consultant to help with a capital planning budget.
Plan and budget.
Plan and budget, um, you know, provided that we get planning commission approval. Is that adequate and correct?
Works for me.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion on that? Any further discussion from the public? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Do I need to restate it? Aye, fine, five zero, I think everybody understands what we just tried to do there.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you to board members, members of the public and presenters for bearing with us as we took that little detour. Now we're going to get back to our agenda as it was published, and so this first item on new business was a update from Juan Brattleboro, and I think we have a number of presenters to come and join us here.
Yep.
And only two chairs, so that's a good challenge for them to solve. So I'll wait for folks to come and populate that space.
Yeah, and while, uh, while they're all coming up, I can get started if you want.
Sure.
And perhaps we'll, uh, have, yeah, we'll, we'll have people introduce themselves after I give an intro.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, so John's going to give an introduction whilst everybody's getting settled about what this thing is, and then we'll hear a little bit more from those folks here.
Great. So in 2023, Brattleboro was identified by the state as a community with higher than average rates of violent and drug-related crime, and we certainly are seeing this in the police department and the fire department. In the police department, where we have over 13,000 calls a year, uh, and those have been growing at 5% a year, so more and more calls that we're seeing. Also in the fire department, where we have about 4,500 calls last year, and those were up 7%. So we have really increasing demands on our public safety systems. In response to that, Governor Scott's Public Safety Enhancement Team, uh, brought to town consultant Jim Baker, who many people met and spoke with, to facilitate a cross-sector response to this problem that the town was seeing. That work culminated in a symposium that was held up at SIT in April of 2024. And, uh, following that, uh, symposium, uh, a, a bunch of, we kind of, we called together a bunch of key local leaders in the community, uh, in public health, safety, housing, and government sectors, and they all came together and just kind of asked, asked the question, i- is there, is there a shared vision that we could find in this work to make Brattleboro better? Is there, uh, a way that we could support each other, that we could, um, be accountable to the community? Those were the types of questions that we were asking. And so we met, uh, we started meeting monthly to put together, to take these thoughts and put them together and see what we could do to, um, to, to, to work better and collaborate better. So who's involved in this? Many of the, all the folks that you see here today, but the folks involved in one Brattleboro, the leadership that came together was from multiple sectors across the community, and really, we took a broad and inclusive approach on that. So in town government, we had members of the select board, uh, sitting in these meetings, we had the town manager, uh, the police department, the fire department, and the library. For public health and social service organizations, we had the Brattleboro Memorial Hospital, Brattleboro Retreat, uh, HCRS, Groundworks Collaborative, Turning Point, Southern Vermont AIDS Project, Building a Positive Community, Senior Solutions, Interaction, Southern Vermont Community Action, and Winston Proudie were all represented. For the housing organizations, we had Wyndham and Windsor Housing Trust and Brattleboro Housing Partnerships. Education sector, we had, uh, the, uh, Wyndham Southeast Supervisory Union, the high school, and the youth council also has joined us. The business community was represented by Downtown Brattleboro Alliance, and the legal system was represented by the state attorney's office. Probation and parole has been very involved, as well as representatives from the Vermont judiciary. For state government, we had our wonderful, um, direct field services director Sue Graff from the Agency of Human Services. And I think this group, as they started to talk and build trust and work together at the leadership level, um, all, all found that what we really want is a healthy and resilient community in Brattleboro, uh, that, where people can have a high quality of life and a thriving local economy, and that was what was bringing us together. And I wanted to turn it over now to Sue to start talking a little bit about some of the initiatives that this leadership group has, has started to, to work on, so.
Thanks, and I'm not sure if I should address the select board or the-
I think both.
Okay, I'll, I'll go straight ahead now. I'm, I'm trying to address everybody, and it's a big group, so-
And Sue, we could do some introductions too at some point whenever you-
Yes, and I'll, I'll have folks, um, so represented here, I'll have the folks introduce themselves, and online we have, in addition, we have Elizabeth Bridjordar from Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust and Leona Watt from, uh, Department of Corrections, probation and parole. Um, and as John mentioned, I'm Sue Graff, I'm the Agency of Human Services Field Services Director. And so what you heard and John described, and we've got a one pager here, um, is the leadership council, leadership, uh, team for one Brattleboro, and, uh, we're supporting key initiatives and key issue areas in the community that are cross-sector and collaborative in nature. Um, and as John mentioned, I think, um, Peter Drucker said it, collaboration moves at the speed of trust, so we, we have taken lots of time to get to know each other, get to know each other's work, um, spend time together, uh, in order to develop this shared vision and purpose and, um, and values and initiatives. And so we're focusing on community building, um, and that looks like, uh, the Fall Safety Fair that was hosted at NUIT. It looks like partnering with the WSU, Wyndham Southeast Supervisory Union's Youth Council on some upcoming safety initiatives. We're focusing on communication as well, so this is a key piece of sort of going public with one Brattleboro, we've been doing lots of work and sharing what we're doing along the way, um, but the one, the development of the one pager, uh, there's an op-ed in the Commons yesterday, uh, developed by this team, um, and we're, um, have a web presence hosted by the town of Brattleboro's webpage. We are also doing substance use and mental health-focused work. Um, a key piece of that is an outreach team, so, uh, there are five or six organizations, and I wrote them down because there's always more than I think, uh, that have outreach staff, so, uh, Turning Point, Groundworks, HCRS has two different programs with outreach staff, Pathways and the AIDS- So Turning Point, Groundworks, HRS has two different programs with outreach staff, Pathways and the AIDS Project. Those outreach staff members are meeting together and coordinating their work in order to address mental health and substance use issues in the community and people that may be needing support around those. Data accountability is a key piece, and Jeremy will speak to the Situation Table and maybe Project Care or some other folks, other things that we're doing. But really taking a data-informed approach. So again, looking at where are the places in town that are particularly, you know, problematic or challenging? Where are police being called? Who are the folks that are, are creating some of that harm in the community? And then again, collectively, what can we do about it? It's not any one particular organization that's here, their responsibility to address these issues. So really taking a collective approach. And then an advocacy group is the most recent team. And again, these are all parts that we are now sort of inviting the public and other partners that aren't on this list already to engage with us around. And so advocacy is the most recent piece, and I'll have other members of the team kind of talk about that. So that's what we're focused on, and we're, you know, drawing on the strength of who's, again, who's in the room and then how we can engage the community around these issues, understanding that even with thirty people from all these organizations, we, we can't do it alone either. And we can't do it just the thirty of us. So this is really an opportunity to share what we're working on, invite the public to join us and to regularly report out to you all via this mechanism, and we appreciate the time here. An opportunity to talk about the work that we're doing. So I'll let other members of the team introduce themselves and, and/or talk about collabora, and talk about collaboration and sort of highlight what's worked for you or what's different about One Brattleboro, I guess, in terms of other work you've done, if you don't mind.
Great. So hi, I'm Christine Hazard, I'm the Executive Director at Brattleboro Housing Partnerships. And I would say, you know, so before this, before One Brattleboro was created, we began to collaborate a little bit more strongly with the Brattleboro Police Department. That was probably nineteen months ago. And we made, we start, we began to meet monthly with Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust because we saw, started to see a real uptick in safety concerns for our residents and our neighborhoods and also the surrounding areas. And in those meetings, we talked a lot about collaboration, and we collaborated around police reports. And we also started identifying limitations of our programs and our agencies. And about, I would say, a few months into it, Jeremy started talking about data, and I'll let him talk about that. But he started talking about this, this program, about looking at data in the community to really key in on where we want to, where we want to put our resources. And in that process, we also started talking about just the real limitations that law enforcement have, the real limitations that housing providers have, and the gaps in services, and also the gaps of, of, of connecting people to services. So when One Brattleboro started up, you know, I have to say in the beginning, I was a little bit pessimistic. I was like, how is this really gonna work? Are all these agencies that I've worked with for many years really gonna be able to collaborate in this way? And it took some time, it really did. And in the beginning, I did not, I, people were very pessimistic. And people were, I would say, had a, had a hard time with the trusting of the, of the process. But I remember one thing very clearly that came out of our first meeting, and that was that Jim Baker said to us, we're not gonna police our way out of this. We're not going, we all need to work together as a community to get this done. And it really resonated with me, and I think it resonated with a lot of the other people in the room. And after a few months, there was just this click of, we're not gonna do this alone. Each agency isn't gonna be able to create this, this change by ourselves. We really need to work together. And so there was some rub because we don't all see eye to eye. But we started to identify where the gaps were in services, and we started coming up with a plan. And for the first time in a long time, I felt hopeful about what we could do in town. And I felt empowered by the fact that we were working together, and we weren't all holding our own burden ourselves. And so during this process, we started identifying, for me, one of our biggest concerns is not being able to trespass people from our property, and we talked a lot about it. And I had never met Steve Brown before, but through this process, we started talking about it. And I said, you know, would you meet with myself and Elizabeth Bridgewater? And he agreed to, like, the next Monday, and I know his very busy schedule. And we started talking about this and thinking about how we could present this to legislators. And very quickly, we did present it to legislators, and we sort of got a ball rolling. It didn't roll as fast as we had hoped in the legislature, but we, we started the groundwork. And I feel like we're starting to move in a direction. And so I will say that I'm a big proponent of deliberate steps. I don't, I, you know, I don't like doing things in immediate fear reaction. So this, to me, feels like a very powerful way of, of, of getting results. And I know that people in the community are kind of like, come on, come on, come on, we want to see results. But I will say, as someone who is in the community a lot and on our properties a lot, I've already seen a lot of results in the care coordination. I've already seen situations be rectified before they got worse. So we and my staff are already starting to see a very big shift in how we do business and how things work out. And so I think from my point of view, I already see it working, so I'm excited about where we're gonna go forward.
Thanks, Christine.
Yeah.
My name is Steve Brown, I'm the State's Attorney here in Wyndham County. I think one of the big issues that we all have is that we all work in a silo in our own lanes. We're not really, you know, paying attention to what our other people are doing in the community. And this has really allowed us to break down the silos and the barriers. It's allowed us to forge relationships that I never would have had. You know, for example, my relationship with Christine now, I think it's great that we were, we were able to work to a common goal. Most importantly, I've been really impressed with the town's leadership on this, especially John Potter, the police, fire. We are very lucky to have these people in these positions. We should be very grateful for what they do. And thank you for having us tonight.
Thanks, Steve.
Hi, I'm Kate Troskis, I'm the Executive Director of Downtown Brattleboro Alliance. And so I guess I got involved in the process earlier on in a, in a meeting that focused specifically on the downtown, when we were seeing a lot of break-ins and there was a lot of talk about, you know, what's happening. It feels like all the focus is often on the downtown. And, you know, the, the folks who come to work every day in the downtown really are the eyes and the ears on the street a lot of the time. And so now in the group, I serve on the communications kind of subcommittee. And I think something that was really impactful as, as we went through this process, and I, I want to echo what I think Sue and Christine both said, is that it took a while to gain trust within the group, to really understand what each other were doing. And we often said, well, wait, if, if we don't actually, if we don't know what's going on, definitely the public doesn't know, like, you know, what's going on and who's doing what. And so it feels really important that we are finding ways to get this message out, that the work that we're doing, I think, is impacting the direct service to individuals. And how that's happening now is actually affecting the systems. So it's, it's been really great to be a part of.
Thanks, Kate. Hi, Jeremy.
Jeremy, I'm the police chief here in town. I think the biggest part for us out of this is the collaboration. That's what we've been working very hard on for many years now. I want to put a number on it, back in two thousand seventeen, started Project Care. Started to get that off the ground, that was for collaboration on response to overdoses in the community because we've seen a drastic increase in those since two thousand fifteen, virtually the heroin, not related to other opioids. That, the, the silos that Steve spoke of have always been a really difficult subway block for us. So this program coming in has been a great way for us to engage that collaboration in a much, much better, more organized way. Great appreciation to the town manager for really forging ahead with it, especially through a couple of meetings that I thought were pretty rocky in the beginning, but seemed to really work out well. There's been a few really positive things that have come out of it. One is our, our core data presentations that we've been giving to all of the service providers in town, which is every two weeks, we take all of the data that this department's got in the last two weeks, and we present it to all of the outreach providers and all of the service members in town that are, have either organizations that, that have people out in the community working with those that are really in need of the community. So we give them a great detail on what we have for data from the prior two weeks. And we coordinate, we coordinated on how that got done by using some of the service providers to come to us and say, here's all our stuff, what would be useful to you? When you guys are out on the street, when you're out working with your clients, what of this information would be useful to you? Because we want to make sure that you have everything that we have. So we do that every two weeks with them, give them everything we have, and go over it as much as they need. And then weekly, if you want me to roll into the table, weekly, another fantastic thing that's come out of the One Brattleboro, out of the PSET, out of Public Safety Enhancement, is the Situation Table. So the Situation Table has really just capitalized on the collaboration that we've been able to start creating with all of these organizations. Right now, we probably have at least probably fifteen organizations that are still showing up every week to sit down with us and collaborate on identifying people that are at acute, acutely elevated risk in town. Basically, people that are at such a high risk that we believe that they're in danger of serious bodily injury or death in town. And I think everyone that lives in town here probably sees some of these people in town on a regular basis. So we're able to work as a team with, with all of these organizations to identify who's working with some of these people and what resources we can provide that perhaps aren't getting provided to these people, and then collaborating on how to best get those resources to those people in the hopes that that can be as effective as possible in reducing that risk not only to those individuals, but also to the community as a whole. And that's been, we're like six weeks in on that program. That program has started off really well, really excited to see where it leads. The department and the town has been in very strong support of it. And we've seen great support from all of, all of the service providers in town, and really exciting.
Thanks, Jeremy. Elizabeth is on Zoom with us. Was Elizabeth gonna speak as well?
Yes.
Yeah, great. Hi, Elizabeth, welcome.
Hi, Daniel, thank you. I'm Elizabeth Bridgewater, the Executive Director of the Wyndham and Windsor Housing Trust. And I have, you know, lots of wonderful things to say about One Brattleboro. It has just been an incredible group to brainstorm solutions with. And I just really appreciate the deepening relationships that I've had through this process. I want to focus on a couple of examples.
One is that Christine already mentioned about the no trespass law that we have some interest in changing. And I think it's gonna be a slow roll, but I've just, I'm inspired by how many people were unfamiliar with some of the limitations that housing providers, both nonprofit housing providers and private property owners have in terms of limiting people who are being disruptive on their property. So we're working together in this early stage of this approach to really bring that awareness to the public and, and then also legislative strategy that we got started this year but want to continue in the next legislative session. So I'm feeling really hopeful about that because I think it'll give housing providers greater tools to have more control over who is on the property. The other thing is that, this is like what I like to call a micro-strategy because it's a kind of a small area, but it was having a really big impact, I think, on the morale in town and the morale of people living in the building. And that is the side entrance to the Nine Canal, which is a downtown building that is housing folks over the Brattleboro Food Co-op. And I think it was fairly visible to everybody in the community that there were a lot of people using that side entrance to tuck in and, and engage in various behavior that wasn't appropriate in, in that back hallway. And it was pretty disruptive, I think, to the sense of the downtown, the entrance to downtown, and certainly to the residents that are living in the building. So after the second One Brattleboro meeting, the chief and I and the assistant chief and Anthony from the co-op met in that hallway and just brainstormed, like, what can we do in this hallway to affect change? And we talked about, you know, cameras and signage, alarming the door, and then sort of the legal framework of, within that one space, how we could set up a legal framework where we could actually no trespass, trespass people from that area. And so we implemented all of those ideas. And, and I, I don't think we can take full credit for that because there's a lot that also the police department is doing in their normal policing activities. But I think combined, what I can, what I'm excited to share is that I check those cameras weekly, and there's virtually no activity in that back hallway anymore. So that's what I'm calling a micro-strategy of just like, we've got a problem right here, let's talk about what to do about it. And we came together and, and created some solutions. There's still challenges in that building, I will acknowledge that. But we are continuing to work together with our, our partners in One Brattleboro. We're partnering with Interaction to host community meetings. We had our first one last week, and it was very well-attended and, and I think well-received. We had a really productive conversation with the residents. The BRAT team is in the building periodically, just to make their presence known. And then we're also collaborating with the AIDS project, AIDS Project of Southern Vermont to do outreach in the building. So we're trying to come at this challenge from two angles, one accountability and safety, and also compassion and outreach. And I think that is actually a great example of what I think One Brattleboro exemplifies because we are very caring people that want to see change in town. And we need to come at it from a variety of angles and, and kind of hold those two things at the same time. Finally, I just want to say, organizationally, we feel really inspired by the data approach that Assistant Chief Evans has brought to the table. It's just been really exciting to see the power of data getting shared. And we've been inspired to start using police data that we have available to us to put into context some of the activities that are happening at properties that the Housing Trust owns. And so we're looking at, we started this year looking at monthly police data at the property level and then also the types of calls, and starting to map those out and look at trends. And so what that's doing is helping us look to see where we may need to make programmatic changes, try to get ahead of trends. So if we're seeing a trend at a particular property, you know, hosting a resident meeting and engaging people earlier on than we have in the past. So starting to really use that data for, you know, actions at the property level. And then also, it's helping us put into context kind of where does the activity that's happening at properties owned by the Housing Trust fit into the bigger picture? Because we're seeing data getting shared about what's happening all over town. And, you know, John talked about, or maybe Jeremy, I can't remember who said it, like thirteen thousand calls a year. And so just for an example, because I just did the data analysis today, you know, calls regarding Housing Trust property in January represented seven percent of the thirteen-ish, you know, if you were to break that out into twelve-month increments. And in February, it was three and a half. So that helps us because we are both needing to respond to issues on a day-to-day basis, but we also need to understand where the issues that we're facing fit into the greater picture. And so this is data that we're sharing with our board every month and with our leadership team. And it, it's helping us understand what's happening and what our responsibilities are and kind of how it fits into the bigger picture. So I just feel really inspired by this collaborative work. I feel really grateful for John's leadership as town manager. It's been, you know, as everybody has mentioned, you know, it took a lot to get to the level that we are operating together now, and everybody stayed the course. And, and certainly John's leadership really helped in that regard. And then I just want to shout out again to the leadership at the police department. And then I just want to shout out again to the leadership at the police department. It's, it's been invaluable to be meeting with them regularly and brainstorming and sharing information. And I think, I feel really hopeful that as we continue to do this work, we're, we're going to be able to, to make a meaningful difference for public safety in town. So thank you. So thank you.
Thank you. Sue, John, who was picking that up?
Well, Leona Wa is online as well from DCPMP. I'd love her to introduce herself if she'd like to and reflect at all. And Star Latronica, who's not sitting up here with us, but from the library I'm pointing, is also part of One Brattleboro, and the library is at the epicenter of all these issues. So I just want people to hear from Star if she would like to share and then we can, I guess, move on from there.
Great. Leona or Star, who's going to go first? Welcome. You're just being sent a request from, there you go.
Hi, thank you very much. I just wanted to say I'm just very excited. You know, I've just started with the One Brattleboro, for the Brattleboro probation and parole office representing, representing the office. And I am so excited about what has gone on so far before I came and now just the plans that are being made and the subcommittees that are forming. And it's just very exciting, and I am really looking forward to what is going to occur with this program in the Brattleboro area. So we're very excited here at probation and parole to be able to participate.
Great, thank you. Thank you for your involvement. Star?
Hi, everybody. Just to echo what everyone else has said, the collaboration and the support, mutual support has just been fantastic. We have a lot of folks who come to the library that are in crisis. It's not a legal issue, so we hate to have to, you know, call law enforcement to come because sometimes that doesn't help the situation, plus it taxes our law enforcement. And so through this program, we've really been able to make those contacts and we can call someone that we know has a relationship with one of the people experiencing a mental health crisis or a substance use issue and get a more quick and more compassionate, well, you know, everybody's compassionate, but just a more trusted response because not only is there trust among the partners, but then there are trust among the community members who are coming to recognize the, the difference that this approach has made. Also, the situation table has been fantastic because we can go there, we can see, okay, everybody, this person is on everyone's radar, so we don't have to worry so much as a library staff, is this person going to be okay? We know that we have people helping us with that. So, so grateful.
Thank you, Stella.
Yeah, so that was, that's pretty, pretty much a, a great summary of everything that this, this group has been working on. I feel like there is so much promise and so much really value in all of the people who've been engaged in this effort that, you know, that we, working together, we can really make Brattleboro a much better place. And there's materials in your backup that describe the, the group, and there's a charter in there and the article that Sue mentioned, as well as the one pager. So if anyone's interested, they can go online and see all that information. Oh, and Seth Thomas has put together a very nice webpage for One Brattleboro, which is hosted on the town's website. So if you now search One Brattleboro on the town website, you should be able to find out all this information there as well, so.
Great, thank you, John. Questions or comments from the board?
Yes, I do have some comments.
Elizabeth?
I'm very pleased to be a member of the One Brattleboro. And I just want to convey to the public that this is really epic, and it's taken a long time. But one of the things that, that we all heard from Jim Baker and carrying with us is, no one else is going to help us. It's up to us to, you know, tackle these questions. And I think it's, it's so promising. There's some people in town who've been hoping for years that everybody will get out of their silos and work together. And that's true for the social service agencies, but the police component is, is really key to, to place people with complex needs in the proper context so that everybody can pull together. And we've seen solutions and we've seen it on a case-by-case level, but each case really helps the problems that we all see as a whole. So it's really wonderful to see us solving the problems on an individual level and on a town-wide level. And again, also, I appreciate everyone's contribution and John's leadership.
Thanks, Liz. I was also present at those meetings and I think in this last year, the board and town administration and town government has been working in a lot of different ways around public safety. And during some very hard weeks and months this year, when I would go to this meeting, by the time I left, I felt more hopeful. And not in some kind of like, I don't know, oh, I'm just hopeful kind of way. Like, I felt really that I was in a room with a lot of very skilled professionals who are capable leaders, who can actually work together in new and exciting ways. And I think that the collaboration that Elizabeth talked about and the impact at Nine Canal Street cannot be understated. That was a very significant hotspot in town for a little while. And just this morning, I, you know, bumped into one of the residents there that I know, and he was telling me how much better things are, how much happier he is. This is really impactful work in the lives of people who live and work in our town. And so I hope that, you know, this work will continue and grow, you know, and, you know, really yield even more results because I think it is an excellent strategy.
And now I'm going to shut up and let's hear some questions. Franz?
Thank you, Daniel. Thank you, everybody over there. This is pretty exciting news, I got to say, to be hearing, you know, I've known about One Brattleboro for some time, but to be hearing the details is really great. There's all kinds of individual details I'd like to hear, but I think, you know, that would probably take up too much time for tonight. Mainly what I'm wondering is how do you get this information out to the public? And certainly a website, webpage is great, but I wonder if there's more active ways that you're actually introducing, just the success stories for starters that, that we're hearing here. I think everybody in town needs to know that that's happening and perhaps even ways that people can participate in some supportive role. What is it you would like to be getting from the community that would help you solidify what you've achieved so far and, and advance things in both quantitative and qualitatively in new directions? So I think there's just so much that it would be great to get out there and to stimulate discussion and, I mean, I, sky's the limit. I'd really like to hear more from you people.
Okay, any reactions to that?
Sure. Yeah, so, you know, the communications group is coming up with what our strategy is going to be going forward. We, we had one op-ed so far, and I think that those will continue. We already have a long list of what those topics can be. I think definitely sharing the success stories is really important and figuring out the best way to do that, not just through, so for example, you know, Elizabeth can send something out to her, you know, newsletter and constituents, but I think it's really important that all of the partners are sharing this message so it reaches as many folks as possible. We've talked about, along that vein, we've talked about, you know, what is the theme? And then how can each individual organization create, you know, like, is it a native post from your social media that reinforces from each other? So it doesn't feel like, you know, Town of Brattleboro is posting about One Brattleboro and we all share it, you know, this, it's not a top-down approach. It's definitely a collaborative approach. And so I think that the communication strategy needs to and will reflect that going forward.
Thanks, Kate. Other questions?
Just, I, how about some street theater? I mean, I don't know, there's so many ways.
Sounds like you're volunteering.
I am volunteering.
Great.
I don't juggle, but I can do, I don't know, sing a song. But, so.
You know, you can, you can tell your friends. I mean, you were impacted by this tonight, go and talk about it with people in your circles. I mean, well, hopefully. But, you know, it's like, share, share the good word. There was, I don't know if anybody noticed, but on the Brattleboro Facebook page, somebody posted something positive recently. And it got like eight hundred likes and like a million comments. People want to, to hear these stories, so go ahead and share them.
Thanks, Kate.
I'll just make an over, a comment. I mean, you know I'm willing to give you guys a platform anytime you need it. Right?
And this is the beginning, so I think that's, you know, this is sort of our, like, you know, we're, we're introducing ourselves. And so, yes, we're grateful to the communications subcommittee around a plan. We're really grateful for the town for lending some of Seth's expertise in his communication role here. So that's invaluable and, and that, it underscores that this, One Brattleboro is an unfunded, you know, coalition of the willing. And so we're coming together to figure out what it is we can do together and drawing on the capacity and the strength and the assets and the resources and the skills of our team. And we will absolutely ask and share what we're doing in, in hopefully creative ways. And that's, that is an open invitation to the public to share, you know, if we have a social media presence, you know, comment, share. We wanted to come to the select board and do this so that, knowing that it was, be recorded with BCTV and it would have resonance and be able to sort of reach people beyond a single event. And so we're being specific about how we want to do that, and there will absolutely be opportunities moving forward to collaborate together around how to get the word out, so.
Thanks, Sue. What about questions from the public? Okay, Gary on Zoom.
District A, just want to say what a great job you all are doing. Just wondering when you're going to have an open forum, I guess, to the public? And I guess I'm looking at changing CPCC to the Citizens Police Compassion Committee. Sounds like a better date, what do you think?
What do you think?
Thanks, Gary. Thoughts on a forum, John?
So, so we've done two community safety fairs in town, and I think we're getting better at them. And I, I, I know the group is likely to talk about doing another, another one of those this year, later this year. I think as, as that concept comes together and, and gets better and better, that, that can be a really great place for the community to learn about what's going on, to interact with the good work that everyone's doing, and hopefully work together with us to try to make Brattleboro better.
Thanks, John. Yes?
Ken Fay, again, I just wanted to thank everyone for their great work. It sounds really, really promising. And also, I wanted to ask, I think there's three organizations here that were, are asking for grants, you know, with the budget. And it just goes to show what, what that money is used for, you know, because you guys are doing such a good job. You say unfunded, but the little amount that we give you, I mean, I think, you know, you're doing great with, you know, so, so little.
Thanks, Ken. Other questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, final thoughts from the select board?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You're appreciated. We look forward to seeing you, many of you again soon. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is a presentation from consultants about the Canal Street safety corridor, stormwater planning, et cetera. Sue, you're going to join us. Are the consultants in the room or on Zoom?
The consultants are on Zoom. Steve Hayes, it's okay.
Okay, Steve Hayes as well, hello, Steve.
Couple things on.
So we've got Sue Fillion, I didn't give you your title earlier, so I'll give it now. Planning Director. Steve Hayes, Planning Technician. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right.
And we're losing you.
You know, I mean, I pay attention. We'll give it a second to everybody to transition.
Hey, Daniel, would you mind asking the consultants to turn their cameras on?
Sure. Consultants from SLR who are presenting about Canal Street, would you mind turning the cameras on? There you go, beautiful. It's like they heard you, Patrick.
They heard you, sir.
Good evening, welcome. Who am I handing this to?
I'll start it and then I will turn it over to our SLR team. So, thank you for allowing us to come before you tonight and present the Canal Street Safe Street and Stormwater Corridor Plan. This was a planning study that the department had, and we've been working on for about the last year and a half, to look at making multimodal improvements to Canal Street and plan for some new development and address known stormwater issues. We have our consultant team from SLR here tonight. Dave Sullivan is the U.S. Manager of Community and Mobility Planning. Fiona Flynn is the Transportation Engineer, and Liz Thompson is a Water Resource Engineer. I also want to acknowledge and thank Faith Dahl from V-Trans, Natalie Eldridge from the Vermont Department of Housing and Community Development, and Hank Anley from Vermont Agency of Natural Resources. Those three agencies were the funding partners for this project, and they were all very collaborative and really helpful during the study. They provided a total of ninety-three thousand dollars for this work, which was matched by seven thousand dollars from the town. Dave and the SLR team is going to present on the project for the next fifteen, twenty minutes, and then we'll leave plenty of time for questions and comments. The goal tonight is to introduce you to this plan, share, share what we learned and what they were able to kind of accommodate in the corridor. When we started the project, the federal funding landscape was very different, and so where we're, when we're ending this project, there's likely not a lot of grant programs available. So moving forward, we would likely be doing pieces at a time as we can find funding for it. So it is a planning study, it's not detailed to the engineering level where we could just go out and construct, so that's just one thing to keep in mind. And with that, I will turn it over to, oh, I do just want to acknowledge, we did have a steering committee, some members are here in this room, and some, our planning commission chair is here as well, so.
Great, thank you, Sue.
Thanks.
Welcome, presenters from SLR, we are ready for your presentation.
Thank you.
Sue, will somebody be presenting it or should I share it on my screen?
Share it on my.
I think we're working on it.
There you go.
Patrick, are you going to be presenting? Yeah.
There we go. All right, well, thank you very much. Again, my name is Dave Sullivan. I manage the U.S. Group, the Community and Mobility Planning, and tonight I'll give you a, a summary of the project. I won't go through all the details. I'm virtual with two of my colleagues, Fiona Flynn and Liz Thompson, and they'll do parts of the presentation as well. Next slide, please, the agenda. So the, the agenda, quickly, the, we've done the introductions, I've said most of this, we'll give you an overview of the project goals, timeline, some of the existing conditions. Fiona will present some of the roadway concepts. I'll come back and give you some idea of place-making opportunities, gateway, some streetscape palette ideas. And then Liz will talk about the stormwater treatment concepts, and then we'll, we'll finish there and be prepared to take your questions or comments. Next slide, please. When we started the, the study, we had some very clear objectives. The, the objectives are summarized here, but in, in, in general, we wanted to develop improvements that support not only motor vehicles, but they support walking, biking, wheeling of any type, and also transit, riding the bus in this particular case. We wanted to identify opportunities to improve the quality of public and commercial spaces along the corridor, and then integrate the best practice in stormwater management to address problem areas and water quality issues that have been identified. Next slide, please. Our project timeline, we began this project about a year ago. Our project timeline, we began this project about a year ago. Um, we um got started in in the spring of twenty twenty-four. Um, through the spring and summer, we collected much of the existing conditions data. Um, in June, uh June twenty-fourth, uh last summer, uh we had our first public meeting where we presented the existing conditions um analysis. Um, and uh, and then we went into uh uh work mode where we started developing a draft plan for the quarter. Um, and uh, worked through the fall and into the early winter. Um, with that draft plan, presented that plan in another public forum in November. And um, and then I finalized the plan over the rest of the winter months through the holidays in January. Uh, currently, we're where that little bike is shown at the end of the uh final plan stage. And we'll talk uh at the end of what our next steps are. Uh, next slide, please.
Next slide, please.
Uh, the previous studies, I won't go through all of these, but one of uh uh one of the early ones we looked at was the Brattleboro Walk-Bike Action Plan. Uh, we were um involved in developing that plan. Um, and this actually had a um, uh, this project came out of that that plan, um, which was to drill down a little bit more in specific corridors, of which this was one. Uh, the Stormwater Master Plan, of course, is important uh in this project. We looked at the uh Route Five Corridor Priority Assessment Survey, uh, the Downtown Plan, the Town Plan, um, the uh Lower Wetstone Brook Corridor Study, the um, and the Gateway Strategy for the Canal Street Gateway District. Uh, next, please. I'll I'll go through um the existing conditions here, you can go right to the next slide. Um, I won't go through all of them, I'll give you a flavor of the type of information that we assembled as we as we uh went along. When we first started the study, um, it was one of the first uh really nice days, actually, and you could see how sunny it was. But we did a walking tour of the corridor and had uh not only members of the S L R team, but a number of people from the uh uh from Brattleboro and uh the Steering Committee. Um, and it was very productive. Some of the big picture things we we came out of there with was, boy, there's a lot of curb cuts here, a lot of wide driveways, a lot of uncontrolled access. The road itself uh has narrow sections, it's got wide sections, which in some cases are almost too wide. Um, the we talked also about some things that we should make sure we uh are aware of and um and take into account as we go through here. For instance, uh, the V Trans Milling and Paving Project. Um, as you'll see shortly, we have not only a long-term plan, but we have short-term, quick-build uh alternatives which could dovetail with the uh Milling and Paving of Canal Street when that comes along. Uh, over street parking, um, uh prohibitions, I guess, and uh where it's allowed, when it's allowed. We talked about the possibility that, you know, the uh the same right-of-way can be uh used for different purposes. There may be opportunities for bike facilities at the expense of some parking and vice versa. Um, and then we also talked uh a little bit about some of the uh alternatives that that are are available. Um, next slide, please.
Next slide, please.
Uh, some of the important things in the corridor were summarized in this, and we presented this to the public. None of these will be uh new to to this group, but um, you know, the new bridge which has opened, um, the uh relocation of the Amtrak Station, which which has some important um uh traffic flow um ramifications. We uh talked about some of the development projects, the possible housing development on Bird Street. And you'll see, we we did a little bit with that along the way. Uh, we talked about the town-owned parcels and um that have some special significance. Uh, for instance, the um, uh, the Kettle Pond area, which you'll see in our stormwater, is is a key area that was that was focused on. So um, again, uh, context and other developments, uh, we we did go through that uh in the existing conditions. Uh, the 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 next slide, please.
The next slide, please.
Um, I I took some of the slides from uh the first presentation and and just kind of shrunk them down so as not to to dwell on any one of them. But the type of things we looked at were um sidewalk conditions, um, what's the transit network, what are the bus routes, uh, for example. Uh, we did a uh a detailed dive on uh crash data in the corridor. We looked at the traffic volumes that were publicly available to us. Uh, we looked at where the crosswalks were and things like that, and other traffic control features of the corridor. If you go to the next slide, like just for a second, about um one of the crash ones, I left this full-size. But we call this a heat map, and uh um what we did was take the information on all the crashes that involved bicycles and pedestrians. And the brighter the circle in the middle means you had the most incidents at that particular location. So all these locations had at least one um uh injury accident having to do with a bike bicyclist or pedestrian. The four crashes was the most in a five-year period up at South Main Street and Canal Street. So this gives us, um, didn't surprise us where some of these uh hotspots sh- uh had shown up. But again, it was interesting to be able to show this uh to the public during our uh our outreach meeting.
Our outreach meeting.
Uh, next slide, please. Um, I won't talk too much about this, because this really isn't my uh bellywreck. I'll let Liz uh talk more about it, but with the storm drainage, we um, what was identified uh was, there's really three um drainage areas that that were of certain focus. And um, if you go to the next slide, we could see where some of the um, um, the stormwater primary issues kind of uh come together in those three areas. And um on the right, some of the um um issues that were identified at those those critical locations. For instance, at the um Canal Street Drainage System, uh, the number one there. The watershed that's feeding that is largely um, is largely developed watershed, so there's not a lot of undeveloped land through there. Um, a lot of the piping is undersized and and aging. Um, and the other thing that's important is water quality. There's there's really not um a lot of water quality uh treatment uh facilities that were identified. Um, in the Bird Street uh um diversion, which is over in uh um the circle number two, the overland flow was something that was identified on Brook Street and and Frost Place. Uh, it impacts private properties in the area. Um, erosion is an issue, um, that some of the outfalls, those were all identified. And lastly, a kettle pond, water quality treatment, erosion, things of that nature, those were all identified when evaluating some of these uh these key issues. So uh, we need to skip or go to the next slide or actually skip to ahead, I'll try to keep it moving. So this is um, to give you an idea of uh, I guess, how the sausage is made. So we gather all this data, and we have to start thinking about, you know, what kind of uh, what are our choices for multimodal improvements? Um, we we go through a much more extensive process, but in general, if you look in the upper left-hand corner, uh, that's the that's the Canal Street Corridor, and it's color-coded by the size of the the right-of-way. So that tells us what what um width of road, um, you know, well, what width of right-of-way, including the sidewalks and 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 other are available um for us to put a facility in. Now, in some cases, uh, you know, y- you might have right-of-way impacts, particularly in the long term, but you want to minimize those. And as you go down um to the lower left, um, it's kind of hard to see on this slide, but on the left side are all the different options we we have. We could have on-road, on-road um bike lanes, on-road bike lanes with parking. We could have off-road bike lanes, we could have shared-use paths, we could have a a number of different types of treatment. But each one has its own width requirements. So the color codes in that chart kind of, we can take those color codes and then look at the the uh the graphic above and say which ones fit in which sections of road. Now, if you want to have a consistent um uh philosophy throughout the corridor, the corridor is about a mile long. Um, you want to see which of these improvements fits through most of the corridor. So you don't want to be changing from a dark blue to a light blue to a middle blue, things like that. So over on the right, um, were two of the uh cross-sections, um, um, which kind of give us, I'll call it the full service. It gives us um turn lane, it gives us a single travel lane in each direction. And then in purple, you see those are bike accommodations, separated in yellow by by some form of uh of uh protection. And then another form of protection is the green, and then the blue is the pedestrians. The difference between the top one and the bottom one is um what we call a cycle track. On the bottom is a cycle track, so we take the two one-direction bike lanes and we put them together. And the reason we do that is twofold. It gives us a little more flexibility in design, because we could um kind of limit most of the disruption to one side of the road or the other. There's disruption on both sides typically, but it would be less on the side where you're not putting the cycle track. And more importantly, um, it allows you to save a little bit of width. So it doesn't require as wide of a right-of-way if you do the cycle track. So what um what does a cycle track look like if we go to the next slide?
The next slide.
Oh, excuse me. Um, this is a um uh similar, not 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 exactly the same, but this is in the vicinity of our office, offices here in um New Haven, Connecticut. And you could see um, w- it it's a similar um cross-section. So going from left to right, we have sidewalk, we have a buffer, then we have the travelways, then we have another buffer, and then the sidewalk, and then another buffer, and the cycle track. So this is a little wider than we would be anticipating on Canal Street, of course, but uh this is a four-lane road. Um, but it's a similar concept, so. Some of the other treatments, excuse me. Some of the other treatments we're looking at and uh will be interspersed, include things like um uh stamped concrete crosswalks. Um, they don't necessarily have to be stamped concretes, but stamped concrete, but the important thing is their is their high visibility so that um they're less likely to fade after uh uh, you know, some plowing and and salt get on and around them uh over the winters. Going clockwise, pedestrian refuge islands. Uh, the the advantage of those is pedestrians only have to cross half the road at a time. It gives them a uh a safety area in between. Um, curb extensions, the same principle, uh, we're trying to reduce the length that the pedestrian has to cross, keep them out of the road for as long as possible. And then raised crosswalk, uh, not sure if we ended up with any of these, but the intention here, um, and it could be on any of these uh crosswalks, for example. Um, but the idea here is more from the opposite vein to slow traffic to uh, because they work as a traffic calming device as well as a crosswalk um accentuator. Um, so.
So.
The uh next thing here is the um.
The.
Pedestrian crossings, you could have um pedestrian crossings that are just the crosswalks with static signage. And those are typically fine in um uh, for instance, at intersections and stop-controlled intersections at traffic signals and things like that. If you have um um crosswalks and they're not at controlled locations where the traffic has another reason to slow down or stop, uh, then you sometimes want to reinforce that with uh uh some different type of equipment. In this case, we're showing two that we um would be recommending at different locations, the R R F B, Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacon. Um, that is something you press the button and all, and uh there, these exist around town, um, so you've probably seen them. Um, but basically, the the lights start flashing and it alerts motorists that there's someone in the crosswalk or someone about to go on the crosswalk. The Hawk or the High Intensity Activated Crosswalk um is the next level up. And what that does is it gives um uh more positive direction to the motorists. You can see there's actual um traffic light indications which hang out over the road. It's more expensive treatment, um, and it's typically, we would recommend that in areas where maybe the pedestrian traffic is highest. This particular case, um, where you uh maybe coming from uh the schools on Fairground as you come across and, you know, maybe over at Fairview Street or one of those areas where there's a lot of crossing of uh of students, um, might be an appropriate place to use a Hawk instead of an R R F B. Um, so those are some of the things we looked at. I'm gonna uh turn it over now to Fiona and let her talk a little bit about um some of the concepts. And we didn't put them all in here, we tried to give a flavor of the uh corridor. She could talk a little bit about the long-term um concepts and then also talk about some quick-build concepts. So Fiona, please.
Fiona, please.
Fiona, you're you're welcome to join us if you can. Patrick, how are we doing on that?
Well, let's see. Stop sharing.
Okay, I should be unmuted, yes? Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, okay, thank you, Dave, and um I think we lost the presentation for a moment, but it is right back on. Thank you, Patrick. Uh, so I'm Fiona Flynn, I'm an Associate Transportation Engineer. Uh, so first I'll be talking through um our long-term proposed roadway concepts. We pulled the selection of the concepts from the report, but there are actually more concepts than this um and different options for some of the sections of the corridor. Um, there is a lot of information on these slides, and I'll be talking through them fairly quickly out of respect for everyone's time. But just so you know, the report goes into further detail on all of these concepts. Um, so yeah, let's start with the long term. So starting at the southern end of the corridor, which is on the left side of the page. Uh, so in this case, uh, the corridor is turned about ninety degrees, so south is on the left side and north is on the right side. So starting at the southern end of the corridor, this is near Fairground Road. Um, through this section, we're recommending bike lanes on Canal Street through the intersection with Fairground Road. And at Fairground, we're recommending upgrades to the traffic signal equipment, which is pretty outdated, and restriping of the faded paint. So lane lines and arrows uh are pretty faded right now, so we'd like to restripe those. And we'd also like to restripe the existing crosswalks or upgrade them to high visibility. As Dave said, um, either uh better striping or a stamped concrete is an option as well. At this intersection, and at many intersections throughout the corridor, we're also recommending that the corner radii be reduced. Um, so narrowing or reducing the corner radii makes it so that turning vehicles have to slow down a little bit more as they take those turns, uh, which just helps to slow traffic and is a traffic calming measure. Moving towards Fairview Street, we're recommending that the bike lanes transition to the separated cycle track. And this cycle track would be on the east side of Canal Street, so on the bottom of Canal Street, in this case, because the page is turned. And this cycle track would continue through the rest of the concepts. Additionally, in general, throughout the corridor, shown in yellow, uh, we're recommending that the existing sidewalks be widened to five feet. Generally, they're about four feet right now, um, and five feet is considered the minimum to comply with ADA standards. So some of these uh recommendations will be echoed throughout the concepts. Uh, and also, we're showing that Hawk pedestrian beacon um at the uh Fairview Street um crossing. Uh, and this is partially to cross the high volume of pedestrians that we understand are out there due to the uh proximity to the school and also to help cyclists to to cross Canal Street between the bike lanes and the cycle track. Moving on to the next slide, please. So this is a little further north, um, and the main portion of this is the Burge-Washington Street intersection, shown towards the center of the page. So the cycle track, as you can see, it continues on the east side of Canal Street. We're also showing in yellow those five-foot sidewalks. And in general, again, we're. And in general, again, reduced corner radii at the intersections and adding in any missing crosswalks at side streets. At both Burge-Washington and on the left side of the page, Maple Pine, we are recommending that stop signs be added on Canal Street, which would convert those intersections to always stop, particularly at Maple Pine. There's a pretty steep grade on Canal Street, and so there's, people fly through that intersection. So we'd like to slow them down and even stop them in this case. This section of Canal Street also has several of those driveways with extremely wide driveway aprons and excessive curb cuts. So we're recommending, particularly in this location, some driveway access management through new curbing to either narrow those driveways or, in some cases, remove the curb cuts where they're not necessary.
Not necessary.
Moving further north on the corridor. So this is showing the Elm Street intersection. This intersection has a somewhat awkward layout right now, so we're recommending that Canal Street be slightly realigned to tee it up a little better with Canal and also adding in some curbing to separate the Elm Street approach from the parking area at the Corridor Market, which is shown as number four on the graphic that shows that. Also, for motorists who are heading north on Canal Street and approaching that bend in the road near Elm, it can be really difficult to see that stop sign that's there at Elm Street. So we're recommending some advanced warning signage that says "Stop Ahead" and potentially even an overhead flashing beacon at the intersection, which would warn the approaching motorists. It'd flash red for all approaches to let people know ahead of time, hey, like, there's a stop sign coming up, you need to slow down. Near this intersection also is the only bus shelter in the corridor, and there are several bus routes that pass through this intersection. So we're recommending an additional bus shelter be considered on the east side of Canal Street. And those are shown in the little red rectangles on the graphic.
On the graphic.
Lastly, oh, sorry, could you go back one more? I have one more thing on that, and then we'll keep going. The addition of the cycle track would impact some of the existing on-street parking that's present just north of Elm and Clark Street, so towards the right side of the page. Because of that, excuse me, we're proposing to add that parking back in along that section of Canal Street by widening into the town-owned parcel that's on the west side of Canal Street. Okay, done with that one. This is the last section of the corridor. So this is between Clark Street and Malfunction Junction at Main Bridge and Vernon. So on the left side of the page, starting at Clark Street, there are actually two options. In option A, the cycle track, which has been on the east side of the street throughout the corridor, would end at Clark Street, and that would be where the bike facilities end for the corridor. The benefit of this is that it would allow us to preserve some of the on-street parking that's currently between Clark Street and South Main Street, which you can see we've striped in. Otherwise, that cycle track would transition to bike lanes, but that would impact the on-street parking while extending the bike infrastructure all the way to South Main Street. At South Main Street, we're recommending that the intersection be converted to always stop. We're also recommending that the South Main Street approach be teed up slightly to better align with Canal Street. And we're also adding additional crosswalks at this intersection on Canal Street now that it is a stop-controlled intersection. And lastly, Malfunction Junction, oh, one more, at the intersection at Main Bridge and Vernon.
This is a candidate for it. We, you know, we're not the lowest. These increases won't put us at the lowest. They don't put us at the highest either. I've seen in some towns, a new residential, a single unit, would be like $1,600. Burlington's zoning fees, I think, are, like, plane permit fees are in like the $150 range. Bennington's a lot lower, but they, the towns that have lower zoning fees also have, tend to have building code, and there's fees associated with that. So I think you'd easily get to where we are with the zoning permit.
So you're comfortable with these numbers?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Other comments, questions?
All seemed reasonable to me.
Okay. You know, I have to say, when I looked at some of the increases, it was like, ooh. And I was also reminded that when we made some, you know, revisions to the budget, one of them was this. And this is just the detail of that. And so I think if that's the budget that we sent to town meeting, we also need to commit to this piece of it. I'm glad to hear that, you know, you did look at other comparable communities. And I think that the background about this 2004 study and then this 2009 minimal action, that's a long time ago now, you know? And so I feel like in some other areas, we've looked at the kind of, I guess, you know, yeah, is this around parking or utilities or something?
Parking.
Yeah. You know, so that kind of, long time since we've raised things. To bring it back into the real world of what it actually might cost to provide these services, you know, it's tough on the user, but I think it is fair for us, as municipalities, so I support it. Let's hear from the public. Public, you're recognized. The public has dwindled.
I'm Tom Mosakowski, member of the public. District Eight. I have a question, a possible typo, and something to advocate to the select board for. About, I'm wondering just about how much in an average year, you know, fees are collected.
Could you go through all your questions?
Sure. And then the other one is, in the commercial category on the first page, it's like the third section, for improvement fee, comma, "commercial accessory." The current fee is 40 cents per square foot. The proposed fee is 20 cents per square foot. Probably should be 80, right? 80 cents? Oh, and then the thing to advocate for is, this is an idea I've had for a while. I've run it by some various people, and no one has seemed to say that it's outlandish. For, it's, in the first section, the big category that's titled "hearing fee" and has a bunch of types of hearings, and one of them is "appeal of the zoning administrator's decision." I think that if an appeal of a zoning administrator's decision or action, which then goes to the Development Review Board, if the Development Review Board makes a decision that overturns or changes that decision, then the person who filed that hearing fee and paid that fee should get reimbursed.
No way.
So I've heard the opinion of one of five select board members, but I just think it's, you know, kind of the right thing to do. If someone, if they were penalized or found in violation of something by the zoning administrator, and that gets overturned, and they had to pay a fee as part of that process to get the opposite outcome, then the fee should be reimbursed.
Okay. Thanks, Tom.
So I invite you to consider that.
Yep. Let's talk about that last one first. So Sue, could you kind of walk us through what the current situation is? Maybe not all of us are VRB experts up here.
Yeah. So yeah, so an appeal, you know, if the zoning administrator issues an opinion and somebody wants to appeal it, whether it's in a butter or it's the person that submitted it, that goes to the Development Review Board. There is a fee. You know, I've heard Tom mention that before. I, you know, it is work that the town has done to issue that permit. So it's basically, you know, we wouldn't be recovering that. You know, we trust our zoning administrator to be trained, make the right decisions.
Okay.
You know, I just think, you know, they've done, they've done the work and they're doing it in good faith.
I think that's fair. And then there was a typo, perhaps, in the improvement fee for commercial?
Yeah, it's actually not a typo. We were discussing that earlier as we were going back over it. So right now, any commercial accessory is charged at the 40, I'm sorry, I have misplaced where I put that sheet.
Would you let mine?
Yeah, just take a look at it.
I circled what I think it is, but.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so we wanted it to be a different fee. Right now... Can you remember that fee?
Right now, we don't have, right now, we don't have a specific fee category for that.
Can we name what that is, just so everyone knows?
Right. For the improvement fee for accessory structures, but specific to commercial and one- and two-unit residential, or, excuse me, greater than two-unit residential, which is considered commercial as well under this scheme.
I see.
At the moment, we have an accessory structure fee for accessory structures above 300 square feet, but we just have that category under the one- and two-unit residential. And so what we've been doing essentially in the meantime is just applying that whenever we have, they're less common, but sometimes you might get a commercial accessory structure, and we've just used that, but technically, we don't have one specifically laid out. So this would add one.
It's double what the accessory structure costs for a one- or a two-unit residential structure is, but it's not as high as the 40 cents, which is the improvement fee for new construction on commercials, so.
Got it.
I know, it does look funny.
Okay. And then I think Tom's first question was sort of about fee revenue. Is that accurate?
Yeah, just how much is to pay.
Yeah. It's, it really varies. So if you have one or two big commercial developments, multi-unit, you know, we could be in the 50s or 60s. I think we've generally been sitting in like the $25,000 range over the past couple of years. And, you know, there are certain things that are no longer requiring permits, so, yeah. We're definitely, you know, if we hit 30, we're lucky. It's been in the 20s.
Thanks, Sue. Other questions from the public? Okay, seeing none. Back to the board. A motion was made earlier by somebody.
Peter.
Peter. It's getting late. To approve the revised zoning fee schedule as submitted. Are we ready for that?
See.
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass is 5-0. Planning Department, thank you. You are dismissed for the evening. Oh, I mean, you're not, I'm not, you're both.
Yes, they are.
They are. John said they are. Okay. Very good. Bye, Sue. Bye, Steve. All right, next up, only almost an hour and a half after schedule, it's the Fire Department. We've got Assistant Fire Chief Charles Keir and EMS Superintendent William Fritz, being very formal, Charles and William, joining us here to talk about the EMS reimbursement updates. Sorry to keep you.
Awesome. No worries. Thank you for having us. Superintendent Fritz wrote the majority of this report, and I'm just going to simply turn it over to him, so.
Thank you. Good evening. I come to you with very great news. So as that report is in front of you and the numbers to peruse, the very top number is, so our total payments received for reimbursements as of the 13th of this month was $369,574.41. Additionally, this week, we have not processed all of our payments. We have another $20,000 payment, so we're at $389,194. So if you look through this report, the general consensus is that our reimbursement is strong. So we have overcome our Medicare barrier. So as you can see, on February 18th, we had a successful transaction with Golden Cross in our first test batch of payments, and we received our first reimbursement of $1,900. Since then, we billed over 471 calls to Medicare, and we have been reimbursed for those. There are an additional 123 which have yet to be reimbursed. They are in a processing state or they were returned for something, which is approximately another $60,000 in revenue for reimbursement. Blue Cross Blue Shield Advantage Vermont is our next big hurdle. So Blue Cross, Blue Shield Advantage Vermont, and United Healthcare have outstanding over about $235,000 in fees that are billed, but we are still working through some challenges with their credentialing departments. Additionally, we have 22 payers which owe us approximately $93,000 for 224 unpaid bills. So the bottom line, if you get to the projected revenue for, excuse me, reimbursement for this time period, we expect, taking out self-pay and coinsurance, we should be receiving another $172,000, which would bring us within $45,000 of the projected budgeted number of the $837,000. So with that, this number to keep in mind is through March 1st. This does not include March billings. That leaves us four months that remain for reimbursement, and we expect to exceed the budgeted numbers.
Fantastic. And I think what is really important here, I said Billy wrote this report, and he did with the exception of the last paragraph. He's a very humble man and doesn't want to take for the credit for some of the things that have happened here. You know, for a number of different years, we heard how difficult it was going to be to get the reimbursements coming in, and they weren't wrong. Everybody that said that was not wrong. Billy has, Superintendent Fritz has, rose to that occasion, has done a tremendous job in making sure that that reimbursement is coming in in an efficient manner. I think there's also needs to be some kudos to Golden Cross Ambulance, who has worked as a partner for us for a long time, and now as our billing partner, the finance department, and of course, Superintendent Fritz.
So I very much appreciate everyone's patience, understanding, and really support as we've worked through this. So as I can strongly say, the money is coming in for reimbursement. We will exceed our budgeted numbers.
Thank you, Superintendent Fritz. Questions from the board? Elizabeth?
I just want to thank both, Charles and William, for your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Other board members?
I have just a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Somewhere in the back of my mind, I remember reading that there was a federal law that required insurance companies to pay within a certain period of time. Is that such a thing?
That's true. There is standards that say we have to bill within a specific amount of time, and they have to pay within a specific amount of time. The challenge is, as a new entity, if you will, is the town of Brattleboro has never billed Blue Cross Blue Shield Advantage, and so they're like, are you for real? And so we have to prove our tax identification. We have to prove that we are actually a healthcare provider. As we were going through this process, Medicare shows up to make sure we actually have a physical building and there are ambulances. So they just came, knocked on the door and said, hey, I don't need to see anything else. Do you have an ambulance? Is this 103 Elliott Street? And then they walked away. So those are some of the challenges. We have to make sure they have our licenses, that we are a licensed agency in Vermont. So as we work through those, we get the reimbursement. So once we have been credentialed, it does come pretty quickly.
Oh, eventually, this is going to be very smooth.
Yes. So I can say that Vermont Medicaid, which was one of our first payers, and they support us very, very much through their third-party vendor of Gainwell that got us set up, we get paid every Thursday.
Great. Thank you. Other board members with questions? Okay. I must say, you know, it's welcome news. You know, the last time we had you guys here, we asked you to come back in a month with an update, and I'm glad that the update is a positive one. I think we can continue to sort of like be able to communicate about how the revenue is going. It is a source of, I wouldn't say concern, but a source of interest, right, in the community as a whole. as we kind of engage in this new project. And like, you know, I think that when you've spoken about it, you always speak about it in a way that seems to make sense to me. And it's hard sometimes to put it together from the memo. So continuing to kind of like put out material that is intelligible to somebody of average intelligence. All right, let's hear from the public. David Levinbach's been raising his Zoom hand for a while, so we'll let him speak. I know, it's cheating with the Zoom hand, really.
Good evening, David Levinbach, District Nine. You probably know what I'm going to say. I am very grateful to hear the revenue numbers, but I still strongly believe that they need to be reported in such a way as collections are tied to the quarters in which they are billed. And I've spoken about this a number of times. I think Mr. Keir and Mr. Fritz know what I have in mind. I think the board knows what I have in mind. And I really hope that you will do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Superintendent Fritz?
Yes, thank you. As is mentioned in this report, I know that the reporting structure is very important to many of our community members, the Select Board and the town. We are working towards it. It is very important that we got these, this reimbursement in, and we got this process working. It's also extremely important that we get Blue Cross Advantage and United Healthcare that $235,000 billed, and that's where the focus is. I want to assure people that people who've had their primary and secondary insurance, our community members, those bills and co-insurance have gone out as well. And an aging report with where we track how long they have been billed and when they are coming, that is in the forecast as well. I'm really putting the effort towards making sure those insurance reimbursements are set up so we get that recurring reimbursement before we get that more detailed report. I do understand the importance.
Appreciate that, thank you. Other members of the public with questions? I'm actually going to go to the person behind you.
Oh, okay.
Ms. O'Connor?
Hi, everybody, Kate O'Connor, Brattleboro. I want to thank you. I know I'm supposed to talk to you, so I'm talking to you while I'm talking to him. I want to thank.
Understood.
I want to thank.
It's my last meeting, we can be.
Yeah, I want to thank, I want to thank you for the numbers. I do agree with David, but you're presenting them in a much more understandable way, so I really, really appreciate it. Saying that, I don't want to throw cold water on something, but we, to get to the $837,000, we're using $250,000 that is not coming from insurance revenue. And so right now, we're not going to know whether we can actually get all the revenue honestly until another year. So I'm throwing cold water on this number, but I recognize that we're not going to know if we're going to actually be able to get to the 850 in an actually honest, only-using-insurance-revenue way until a year from now. See what I mean? Because we're using 250.
I totally see what you mean, yes.
And I don't mean to like knock you, but I just, when we're saying, hey, we're all excited, let's throw the balloons up, we got to the 850. We're only getting there because of the 250. That's not insurance reimbursements.
Yeah.
But I get it that we'll know in another year whether that works. So I'm not trying to knock you, I really appreciate this, but I just want to make sure that everybody out there who's looking at this understands.
Thanks, Kate, Billy.
That they're just 250.
One thing I would point out in the progress towards budget goals, if you look at that third bullet point, it says $587,127. That does subtract the $250,000, which is mentioned, because I do think that's very important to take into account that that money was there. So I want to reassure everybody that that number, that 300,000, does not include that $250,000 that was initially put in there. And so we'll be able, if you subtract that from the initial, or from our year-end of reimbursement, you will be able to get an accurate depiction of what that was, subtracting the 250,000.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Heidi?
Shall we walk over there, or do you want to?
You're okay.
Do I look at you or look at?
No.
You're good, you're good.
Okay, so my name is Eric Karen. I am from District Seven. And I'm glad to be able to ask my question. I think I've been here longer than it took me to fly to Rico. So my question is about trust and transparency and about the future expenses related to, the switch to this model that we're talking about. I've been watching very carefully since the transition happened, and I've been listening for numbers that I believe that we were promised that would help us understand how this would become a profitable switch. I remember the words were profitable. And I remember there would be tracking and a careful understanding of a new program, and that would include expenses. Now, I rely on other people to read these forms because they're paper, but I haven't been able to find the expenses to compare to the revenue, and I certainly haven't been able to figure out like a projection to profitability. Can you help me understand the expenses related to revenue and how close we are to profitability?
Thanks for your question, and thanks for your patience. John, do you want to take that?
Yeah, so I don't recall anybody ever talking about profitability around this. We've talked about reimbursements. We talked about what would be the least-cost option to the town. And when we presented this transition to the Select Board in September of 2023, we analyzed the two approaches that the board had before them. One was doing the transportation with the Fire Department. The other was doing it with transportation with rescue. And the, what we found was that over five years, the rescue approach would have cost an additional $1.4 million to the town. That's why, I think largely a reason that we went with the in-house option. That will be a good thing to analyze in a year or so to see whether we've met that savings. And I think, you know, from what we're looking at right now, I think we should be pretty optimistic about that.
Thanks, John. How do you have something to add?
You know, that's a very accurate description of how I would put it as well.
Daniel? One second, please.
With all due respect, I have a great problem.
Heidi, would you address me?
I have great problems with these kinds of answers. Oh, sorry, Heidi Fisher, District Seven. When you, when the Fire Department first presented their numbers, I don't know what month it was I was here. I don't know when it was, a few months ago? Two months ago, maybe? One, I don't know when that meeting was. I asked very specifically, what are your expenses? The answer I got at that time from Assistant Chief Keir was, oh, I'll have to look into that. I don't have those numbers with me. After that meeting, other board members, I mean, other RTM members and other townspeople had also asked that question. And we've been in contact, I've been in contact with a few of them, who followed me, forwarded me some of the information they got back when they asked once again, what are the expenses? It doesn't tell us anything to look at revenues only without expenses, as Eric was trying to say also. I still, we still have not gotten those numbers. The answer we got was, all of the EMS numbers are mixed in with the fire numbers, which I don't understand how one can start such a huge endeavor, spending so much of the townspeople's money without being able to give us clear expenses numbers. I, as you may know, I was on the Board of Rescue for a long time, and we never would start a new program without having a clear sense of what the expenses are and what the revenue was, or reimbursements were. So honestly, I think it's unconscionable that we cannot get that information out of the Fire Department.
Thanks, Heidi. John?
Oh, yeah, please go. John, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I don't remember that specific conversation with the community member speaking, but not to say that it's a very complicated answer. We're an all-hazards department. We handle a lot of different emergencies and hazards throughout our community. We have cross-trained staff, and we are incorporating an EMS service into that. So by, I acknowledge what our community members are saying, and we will have a much clearer answer after we have a year of data and a year of formal billing, a year of actual startup costs, and all of those things. We will be able to give that clear answer. It's a complicated answer because of the nature in which Fire-based EMS runs. We're an all-hazards department. We're cross-trained staff, and we're answering emergencies that are both EMS and fire hazmat, technical rescue-related.
Thanks, John?
Yeah, and I'd just add to that good answer that we have been working on trying to split out the costs of all the services within the department. So, in fact, all of the departments in the town so that we can have a conversation about what various services are costing the town. It will not, it will not be, you know, something that we are going to be able to finish like tomorrow, but we're in the middle of the process of doing that, and I hope that that information will be helpful for everybody.
Great, thank you. Other members of the public with questions about this EMS revenue update? Okay. Oh, actually, I see somebody on Zoom, sorry. Mr. Oz.
Oh, and good evening or good night, I guess. District Nine. And thank you, thank you again for the report, and thank you for that information, particularly that you're working towards a way of trying to look at whether the revenue that's coming out of this program, what percentage of that revenue actually addresses the additional cost of providing that program. And it's very hopeful that you're looking at that question. If you want, and again, I don't mean to be confrontational, but just for the record, if you want, I can find the two addresses or two statements that should be on the record with respect to this. And the one was that in a prior town manager had said publicly that this would provide so much revenue that you could actually run other programs with the revenue out of this program. And that was a public statement. And then there was a public statement subsequent to that, that it was not a cash cow.
10 o'clock to keep it to.
Right.
Considering right now.
I'm just addressing what was said in response to another, to one of the questions here, that there was another statement that it was not a cash cow, but it would reduce some of the expenses of the program. So it's good that we're looking at what the reduction in that expense would be. I have a very specific question with respect to the memo. On, and I, and maybe it's just me because I'm not good at numbers. Total payments received was $369,000. Then on the table on the bottom of page one, it says total reimbursement was $243,000. Do I not understand what those two numbers are and why are they different? And that's my simple question, and I guess I'll leave it there.
It's appreciated. Billy?
Yep, thank you for that question. I specifically put that table in there to explain the Medicare-only reimbursement. So that is solely dealing with Medicare, as that was our big hurdle. So that 243,195,48 is from Medicare only.
Okay, thank you for the explanation.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the public on this item of EMS reimbursement updates? Yes?
I just wanted to be sure I understood. I didn't get that, you know, did we answer your questionnaire thing? What I'm understanding is that there is no system in place to track the expenses of the EMS, and we will need to wait a year or more to get that information. That's what I thought I understood. Am I correct?
John?
No, that's not correct.
Okay, thank you. Let me know what the answer is.
Yes, so I don't have a timeframe, but it's in like the next few months that we think we will have some estimates around the cost of services. They may not be the, to the level of detail that would satisfy you, but they will be a start for us to understand kind of what the breakout of the total costs of the department expenses are for the particular services that you're interested in.
Thanks, John. Okay, any further questions from the public? Okay, Select Board?
I'd like to address the questions that have just been discussed here. And I want to say very clearly that from the start, we were told by everybody who came, who knows about EMS, that we would never make a profit on this. And that was integral to our thinking about the service right from the start. So profitability is not an issue. The other part of this is the expenses, and what are the expenses for EMS? And when Assistant Chief Keir says we're an all-hazards department, what he's saying is that this one group of people, with their equipment, with their building, has a lot of expenses, and there's no way to exactly divide those expenses into the categories, because it's the same people, and it's the same equipment, and it's the same building. And so all those things are mixed together. Now, my understanding of finance and accounting is limited, but what I understand is that in that setting, you can make approximations, and you can assign a certain amount of this to the fire end of things. You can assign another amount to EMS or technical rescue, or hazmat, or all those different things the department does. But there's no way to really say exactly how much money was spent on any of those subdivisions of what they do. Therefore, we can go through and make some assumptions and assign values, which is what the town manager is saying we're doing. And then you can at least compare year to year to year, but you still don't have an exact tally of what the expenses are. That's why we can't give you the number. It's all mixed up, and we can try to separate it out, but it's never going to be precise. And as far as profitability goes, if we can somehow pretty close to break even on this, and when I say break even, I mean over a five-year period because we had a lot of expenses to start it up. But if we amortize everything out over a five-year period, I'm hoping that it's going to show that we actually did better financially by making this decision and going through all this work than we would have done financially if we had just agreed to the rescue offer where we were going to be paying them a half a million dollars a year. So there's, you know, we're doing this in good faith and trying to account for things as best we can. And it's going to take some time before we really see how it all shakes out. But I'm hopeful that this is going to be not only a good move for the town in terms of the operations, but also a good move for the town financially.
Thank you.
We just haven't seen that yet.
Okay, I think we have strayed very far away from EMS reimbursement update. I understand these questions. I have been through this process with you all. I know that they're of concern to the community, and I think that they'll continue to be addressed by the town, that continue to be asked, and that's fine. You know, I actually really appreciate the way that the Fire Department shows up to answer these questions, and the town manager as well. So let's continue to like explore this together. But I think right now, unless there is a further question about EMS reimbursement updates, then we're going to move on. So Mr. Oz, you've raised your hand. If it is a question about EMS reimbursements that pertains to this memo, I'll entertain it. If not, we're going to move on.
Can you hear me? Robert Ozier, District Seven, District Nine, I'm sorry. April 11, 2022, the town will see a $500,000 to $700,000 net gain in revenue. That's the quote from a press release from the town. Did you hear that? May I, may I repeat it? I'm sorry? Okay. So an April, an April 11, 2022, press release from the town of Brattleboro stated that the town will see stated that the town will see a 500,000 to 700,000 net gain in revenue.
Very well. And, you know, whatever statement was said in 2022, I would love to see it hold up in 2025 or 2026, but I can make no statement about that, I don't think. I'm going to move us on. It is 10:08 PM, and we still have one more item on our agenda. Thank you so much to Billy and Chuck. All the best for the rest of your evening.
Yep.
And we're going to move on to our final agenda item, which is about safe neighborhoods. There's a website on the town's...
Yes.
There's a page on the town's website that speaks to safe neighborhoods, and John Potter is going to speak about that.
Yes, and I think Chief Hardy will join us and maybe Assistant Chief Evans.
Assistant Chief, Chief, thank you so much for sticking with us all night.
Yes. So this was, I don't know, Chief, do you want to tell us a little bit about what this is all about?
Yes. We're talking, we, it's just been put on the website about the new Safe Neighborhood Initiative. So just quickly, just to say what that's about, okay? That was that, in the past, I've come to the Select Board and I've talked about the numerous drug houses that are in operation in town. All right, right now, we figure there are probably at least 20 in town right now that are operating, and that we are combating this, utilizing our offices and different agencies and anything we can to try to combat the amount of drugs that are being sold and distributed in Brattleboro. The Safe Neighborhood Group started out as individuals that were concerned about a drug house that was openly selling drugs in their neighborhood that continuously, no matter how many times we raided it, it continuously opened back up within days sometimes, and the same people would come back and continue to sell drugs in the neighborhood. So the neighbors came to us and they said, what can we do, you know, to combat this activity within our neighborhood? So we started to have meetings. At first, I started to meet with them like once a week, and then we started to meet a little bit more often when they got more neighbors to come together that wanted to talk about these issues. So we started to meet, and we decided that they could form a Neighborhood Watch Group with each other. We helped them develop, develop the group. I gave them some pointers on how to stay safe while they developed this group. And so they all came together, they formed the group, and they were able to combat the house within their neighborhood. And actually, we were able to close that particular house down. And that was one of the most prominent drug houses in town. It had been running for quite some time. And because of all the activities and this neighborhood, these people in the neighborhood getting together and getting organized and going through different steps, it took a while. And we had a couple of times where we had to go back to the house because the people kept coming back to the house. But I'm glad to say that it finally has taken effect, and that drug house has been shut down for good, we hope. And it's all through this particular Neighborhood Watch Group. So right now, I have two other Neighborhood Watch Groups that are forming. And so this was a good idea for this successful group to put their information out so they could tell other groups and other people in the neighborhoods and communities how they can help themselves because, you know, we need the community to tell us what's going on, to be the eyes and ears for us to be able to combat some of the drug activity that's going on in, in the town. I also said, I also wanted to just tell you really quick that, because this came up a couple of times in meetings this week. So we have had an uptick between this January through March 20 of last year to this year. We've had an uptick of drug calls, 290%. These are actual drugs, not just thinking drugs, maybe drugs. We also are starting to see a little, a bit of meth showing up here, which is a concern, particularly in Brattleboro. I've been here for three years, and we were not seeing meth. We were seeing a lot of fentanyl and heroin, but we're starting to have people that we are interacting with now that are having meth on them. So that's something that we're going to really, really pay attention to. You know, and if anybody needs to contact me or call me or my office or sit down with us and talk about how to form your groups or any information we can share with you about these dangerous drugs that are coming into town, we would be happy to talk to that, you know, talk about that.
Thanks, Chief Hardy. Questions from the Board? Liz?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, Assistant Chief. I see this as a, another example of a close collaboration with the police department and the people of Brattleboro. And also, just reiterating what you've said many times about it not being just a downtown effort and that, that our police department serves the entire town.
Exactly, exactly. And that's what we've been trying to make sure that people understand that. Downtown is a part of the issues we have in town. But to be able to interact and do what we need to do to keep the downtown for, you know, flourishing and, and getting businesses back there and get people spending time down there, we've developed the, the safety plan for the downtown. That frees us up to take care of all these other areas in town where we are seeing these, these interactions, these businesses, these drug houses popping up all over town. You know, and, and I think that I just really, really, really want to reiterate that, that drug houses are in Brattleboro, all right? We have interactions almost every day with some type of drug activity, you know? And we are not trying to criminalize people being addicted to drugs, and we're not trying to criminalize homelessness. We are trying to keep the dealers out of here, and we are trying to get people treatment. And that's another thing we've been able to accomplish a lot by having the Brat Team because we have Justin Johnson on the Brat Team, who's just been invaluable in everything he's been doing with people that are suffering from addiction. You know, I sat down with him this morning, and we talked about the fact that he's already gotten at least eight people to go into treatment. And us having the ability to give him the tools he needs to be able to take people, such as a vehicle, to take them right away. We also just celebrated two individuals that have become clean, that were individuals that was addicted to drugs for quite some time. And so what we do is every month, we have a spotlight of individuals that get clean, and we may, and we give them gift certificates or we give them what they may need to help them get to work. We've given one gentleman a bicycle so he could get to work because he's, he's fought the hard fight, and he got himself clean. And now he's a, a member of our community that is going to work every day and contributing.
Great, and I just see this as, as a nice bookend to our first discussion about one Brattleboro. And it's, it's really a person-to-person assistance that's needed.
Absolutely. Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Just wanted to chime in. I mean, hearing stories like that is great, and the work that you're doing is really important, both from the law enforcement perspective and the helping people who need help perspective. I think it's terrific that this is part of what we do here in this town, and we need to support it. We need to keep it going. And I think that's a very important question for people to think about at this point.
Thank you. Other questions, comments?
As always, thank you for what you do.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Members of the public with questions or comments on this matter? Okay. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your work. Thanks to the community members that worked with you on this as well. Really important stuff.
And with that, I, and could I just also add Seth Thomas, who put together the webpage for this, so that when people want information, they can easily find it on the police department's website.
Yep.
Yeah.
And the towns, yeah.
Yep. And with that, I think we just have one more thing to do. Questions?
I'd like to make a motion here at the end of my Select Board career.
And only if you make a successful motion.
Mister, no, make the motion.